Ladies and gentlemen, good evening to you. And we're trying to get all of our microphones to come on and work. It's good to have everyone here for the May 20th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. Beautiful day. If you would please, I would like to have a prayer after which Honor Guard will have the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand through it as they come down. Would you pray with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity of being here today. We thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the privilege of being able to live in this country, in this state, this city. Please be with the leaders and the council as we work to make that city even more beautiful. And we ask that you be with all of our service people and all their families. We ask that you be with the families of everyone that's represented here today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Stand, please.
Honor Guard, kick, hut! Cover. Flag bearer, post. Everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, hoo! Flag bearer, post. Please be seated, uncovered.
Okay, thank you very much. Item C is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. Item D is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 15th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Raise your hand. And lastly, on item D, the regular council meeting of May the 6th, 2014. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Item E, and folks, we've got a packed agenda tonight, so we want to, I'm gonna try to talk a little faster and all of us. The item E is the Awards, Ceremonies, and Promotions Committee. The first one on is, and Jim, Chairman is Councilman Jim Gallagher, and he's going down to put it. Number one is a proclamation proudly recognizing the Gaston County Veterans Honor Guard. Councilman Gallagher.
Honor Guard. Cover, please.
Commander Harris, in Honor Guard, come on up, please.
Whereas, the Honor Guard of Gaston County is composed of volunteers whose primary role is to provide funeral honors for Gaston County's deceased veterans. And whereas, until a few years ago, the Last Man's Club provided memorial tributes to Gaston County's deceased veterans. However, they are no longer able to continue. And whereas, it was then that the Gaston County Honor Guard, these men here, were formed to deliver memorial tributes to our county's deceased veterans. And whereas, currently, we have forty-two members are on the Gaston County Honor Guard roster, and during the years 2013 and 2014, an average of twenty-plus members attended each funeral, folding and presenting the next akin with the United States flag, performing taps, and sometimes presenting arms. Taps is one of the saddest songs I have ever heard, and I really thank these gentlemen for doing this. Whereas, the members of Gaston County Honor Guard are U.S. military veterans, and each one of the veterans represents their time, they represent the United States Army, the Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, and Marine Corps, to express gratitude to those who have served in the military. And whereas, starting their Honor Guard in 2011, the Gaston County Honor Guard provided military honors for two funerals. Then after that, in 2012, the Honor Guard provided honors for seventy-nine funerals. And in 2013, the Honor Guard honored one hundred and four funerals. And so far this year, in 2014, five months, the Honor Guard has provided honors for thirty-eight funerals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city, the council of the city of Gastonia do hereby express our deepest gratitude and dedication of the Gaston County Honor Guard and for their selfless commitment to the men and women who have served in the military, thereby exemplifying veterans serving veterans. I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this twentieth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2014, by Mayor John D. Bridgman. Thank you, Commander.
Thank you.
A few words?
We're honored to accept this. No one person could do this without all of us together. This is just a small portion. A lot of people got notified late and had other commitments, so I couldn't have done this without all these guys. These guys couldn't do it without me. Well, they have been for the last two weeks, but hopefully, I'm back. So, thank you, every one of you guys, and thank you, City Council.
I just want...
Thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Cliff, love you. Love you. Take care. Oh, that's my buddy.
It's been a while, liking being here.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you for all that you're doing. We really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you for what you're doing and what you did in the past.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Good to see you. It's been a while, hasn't it?
Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you. We really do.
Hey, we've come a long way.
Appreciate you.
Hey, we've come a long way.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
My daddy was in the Navy.
Yes, sirree. Thank you for what you do.
He was in the Navy.
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, he was in the Navy. Oh, really? He was in the Navy, and it was a good, it was a good service.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sirree.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proclamation.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay. Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. The next proclamation, we'd like to speak with and honor the Earl Tyndale Ford family and business. Come on up. It is now Natalie's CEO and Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Very well deserved.
Whereas, Mr. Earl Tyndale began his career on a used car lot in Boyer Motors Savannah, Georgia. And after managing a Ford store in Orlando, Florida, Mr. Tyndale brought his family to Gastonia in 1974 and purchased the Ford dealership here. And whereas, Tyndale Ford has become a strong asset to our city, over the past four decades, that's forty years, Mr. Tyndale set precedent early on to support the community and to center success around the people that work for him today. The Tyndale Organization has ninety-one employees, full-time. Whereas, through the years, Mr. Tyndale has won numerous awards, including the National Time Magazine Regional Dealer of the Year Award and the Distinguished Lifetime Achievement Award from the North Carolina Auto Dealership Association. Very nice, sir. And he served in several terms on the Ford's National Dealer Council and has held many offices locally for civic organizations and for nonprofits. Whereas, his daughter, Natalie Tyndale, after graduating from University of North Carolina, better known as Carolina or UNC Charlotte, I mean UNC Chapel Hill, Go Heels, you've heard that, and working her way up through company, purchased the dealership from her dad in 2002. Whereas, Ms. Tyndale has been recognized as Businessperson of the Year three times since then, and in 2008, acquired Subaru. And today, she leads the Tyndale Ford Subaru dealership and continues the philosophy and legacy established by her father. And I have to just say this, this family, the Ford Tyndale family, you know, they have, you know, have given time, energy, and money to nonprofits and civic organizations within Gastonia, and they helped many people in need in our town many times, and I just want to say attaboy. But let me continue on with the proclamation. Whereas, the last forty years, Tyndale Ford Subaru has exemplified the highest standards of leadership and service to our community and has served many generations of families. And the Tyndale Ford name continues to stand for friendly, friendly staff and a can-do attitude and honesty you can depend on. Now therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and the council of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina, do hereby congratulate Tyndale Ford Subaru for forty years of exemplary service to the citizens of Gastonia and the surrounding areas. And witness thereof, I here to, I hereon to, set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed this twentieth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2014, Mayor John D. Bridgman. And Tyndales, thank you, and I'd like you to have, say a word.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you so much for this award. It's hard to believe, it's been forty years. It's even harder to believe that I was ten years old when we came. If you believe that, maybe we, I doubt it. We had the opportunity to go. Ford was determined that we were going to have a dealership, and we had an opportunity to go to a lot of different communities, look at a lot of different dealerships, and after a lot of prayers and thought, we wanted to raise our family here, and that's the reason we came, and we wanted to give back to the community because the community was good to us. And I hope we've done that. I hope that all would agree that we've been good citizens, and we will continue to be. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a moment to all say thank you so much for this honor. This is a true delight and very unexpected, and there's a lot of very important people in the audience today that have supported us over the years, and, and the pals who have taken care of us for quite a long time, so thank you all for the support that you give us. And we have been here for forty years, and I hope we're here forty more, if I can keep you on.
We do too.
(laughing)
You're certainly welcome. About a talk.
How are you? Good to see you. Looking great.
I have to reach over here, girl.
Hey, dear, how are you? Good to see you. Well, forty more years. Forty more years. That's exactly right. Good to see you.
Let's see. Good to see you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, lady. That green for money. Thank you very much. Well, thank you. And it's very important that you have it, yes, sirree. And you worked it out, I know you've done. Who's next? Who does food?
I'm not gonna be around when you celebrate this sport.
You do that. Okay.
No.
He got mad and left. Well, he's not down.
I'm not gonna be around then, but I'll be watching y'all.
You go ahead with that.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the proclamation.
Is there a second to it? Is there a motion? Is there a discussion? All in favor? Proclamation. Well, it's done, okay. The, the next, it's approved. It was close, but the, number three is the 2014 Student Achievement Awards. I'd like to call on Councilman Pierceall, please, sir. That'll be E3 in there.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'd like to recognize our Student Achievement Awards for some outstanding students in the Gaston County schools. And what I'll do is I'll name the school, the student, and then the presenter that will be presenting the award for them and speaking a moment about them. For Ashbrook High School, the Student Achievement Award goes to Chandler K., and Joey Clinton, the principal, will be the presenter. So if you two will come forward.
My name is Joey Clinton, I'm the principal at Ashbrook High School, and I present to you tonight the Student Achievement Award for Ashbrook High School to Chandler K. And I'm just gonna read off a little bit of his bio here, it's very impressive, and you can't really get the feel of the kind of student he is unless you hear, hear some of this stuff. Mayor, and, excuse me, recently, he was named Gaston's, Gaston Gazette's Best and Brightest and the Charlotte Observer's All-Star Senior of the Year for Ashbrook High School. Time Warner Cable News 14 also featured Chandler as a Scholar-Athlete of the Week for tutoring, for turning his passion of competitive swimming into an opportunity to help disabled children. Chandler and his sister co-created the Just Swim Camp, a camp that provides disabled children the opportunity to learn, to love the sport of swimming. It's one of the things, it's one thing to create a program that benefits others, but it's another thing to raise money to sustain the program. Chandler did so, raising money to sustain the camp this past year, and choosing another student to keep the camp running in his absence. Named the 2014 Big South Conference Male Swimmer of the Year, Chandler's swimming accolades are lengthy. In grades nine and 10, he swam in the North Carolina Junior Olympics. For four consecutive years, he earned the title Most Valuable Swimmer at Ashbrook. His Greenway swim teams were named Big South All-Conference Champions and advanced to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Regional and State Competitions all four years. In addition to swimming for Ashbrook and the Gaston Gators, Chandler also runs cross-country. He served as captain on both teams he was a part of, both swimming and cross-country. As Ashbrook's student body president, Chandler says that his crowning achievement in the role, in that role, was his ability to unite a wide diversity of people through activities. Selected to attend Governor's School and Commissioner's School, he is an active member of the Junior Civitan Club and was named 2013 Civitan Outstanding Male. An advanced placement scholar with honors credit, Chandler served as Junior Chief Marshal in 2013, and currently holds a 5.3 GPA. Beyond his leadership at Ashbrook, Chandler has served on the Mayor's Youth Council, Rotary's Junior Leadership Gaston, and has participated in Homeless for a Night, Habitat's Restore, and Team's Westward Bound. Chandler K. has been awarded the Park Scholarship from North Carolina State University, and this scholarship has a four-year value of $96,000, covering tuition fees, books, room and board, a meal plan, and more along the way. And it also includes a stipend for a laptop computer. So we're very proud of Chandler K. Thank you.
Chandler, on behalf of the city of Gastonia, the mayor, and the city council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award for Ashbrook High School.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, so I think Principal Clinton covered just about everything. He may have left out a few details, but I just want to say thank you to the Gaston County school system, to all the opportunities that are available in Gaston County, to Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, to TCGC, and just all the wider range of activities that are available and all the things I've been given the opportunity to participate in. And thank you very much to Ashbrook High School, which just won the Wells Fargo Championship today for the second year in a row, so.
All right. Good. Well, tell them. Okay, next, from Greer Middle School.
Todd, can he come up? Joey?
Yes.
Go Greenway.
While they're shaking the council's hand, we'll go ahead and announce the next one. From Greer Middle School, the winner of the Student Achievement Award is Clayton Neil Elliott, and to present is the principal, Paige T. Carver. You'll come forward.
Good luck to you, State. I'm sure you'll do well, Charlie. Nice to see you.
I'm back.
Good.
In a different role. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Paige Carver. I'm the interim principal of Greer Middle School. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Clayton Neil Elliott. He is the eighth-grade student that Greer Middle School has selected to be their Student Achievement Award winner. Clay exemplifies characteristics that make him an excellent student and a model for fellow students. Academically, Clay's an honorable student who works hard in the classroom, and every one of his teachers said he is a pleasure to teach. As a member of the Junior Beta Club, he traveled to Greensboro to the state conference, and as an active member, he also worked on both a banner and a woodworking project that were entered into competitions at the conference. Clay is also in the band. He happens to play first chair, alto saxophone, and is a section leader. Clay excels in athletics and is, and was a member of the Greer Middle School County Champion Football Team. During the season, Clay played six different positions, played some on offense and some on defense, whatever the team needed. He happens to play first chair sax, alto saxophone, and is a section leader. Clay excels in athletics and is, and was a member of the Greer Middle School County Champion Football Team. During the season, Clay played six different positions, played some on offense and some on defense, whatever the team needed. He is also a successful member of the Greer Wrestling Team. His coach was really very pleased with his success as a wrestler, but he was most proud of him for helping several players by teaching them various moves, which is something Clay took upon himself, it was not something the coach asked him to do. Clay Elliott was the unanimous choice of his teachers for the way he conducts both himself in the classroom and on the field. And Mr. Clinton, if you're still here, I want you to know, this young man is gonna make a fantastic Greenway. Congratulations, Clay.
Clay, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Mayor, and the City Council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award. Thank you, congratulations. You want to shake your hand?
Yes.
Clayton did not want to speak, so we're not gonna make him speak. Next, for our Student Achievement Awards, we have Highland School of Technology. The winner of the Student Achievement Award is Destiny Harrell, and the presenter is Denise McLean, the principal.
I'm Denise McLean, Principal at Highland School of Technology, and I just want to share a few stories about our selected student, Destiny Harrell. Destiny is a serious student, she's one that teachers can depend on to exceed expectations. She is one of a few female students in our computer engineering pathway. She stands out as being one of the most accomplished. In fact, during her sophomore year, she earned the recognition by the National Center for Women in Information Technology and received the Aspirations for Computing North Carolina Award. Her teacher nominated her because of her intuitive and disciplined study in the field of computer networks. Destiny is also, has served as a member of the school representative for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. She's served as an advisory committee member for three years, and she is now a mentor for underclassmen serving on this particular prestigious group. She's a tutor in the area of mathematics. Staff members have observed Destiny while tutoring, while tutoring and working with other students, and they've been impressed with how she is very patient and always willing to give up her social time to help students before school who are in need. Personally, I'm impressed with Destiny's work ethic and her academic achievement. Last year was her first year taking a North Carolina Virtual Public School course. She took the course as a fifth period, which was in addition to her regular school day. Destiny was one of only three students that earned an A in this online advanced placement course that she took independently, doing the work on her own. This year, Destiny was recruited to be a manager for our volleyball team. As our AP US History teacher and our English 12 teacher, our coaches, they told me that they were looking for a reliable, intelligent manager who would be a good problem solver and role model for the players on the team. Well, they could not have chosen a better candidate. Destiny did a superior job of helping the team remain organized and motivated. She stayed late after games to review the statistics with the coaches and to strategize and to make sure the gym was left in good order. Finally, Destiny is one of the rare students who demonstrates intelligent teamwork mentality, strong work ethic necessary to excel in all areas. She is self-confident, well-rounded, and works diligently to make the most of every learning opportunity. For these reasons, she is worthy of this recognition and will greatly be missed next year at Highland School of Technology. I present to you Destiny Harrell.
Destiny, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Mayor, and the City Council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my parents for always being there and supporting me, I'd like to thank the school system, because I've been here for thirteen years, going from kindergarten to 12th grade, and I've not had a better group of teachers, these teachers are awesome, and I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Next, from Hunter High, Hunter Huss High. The winner of the Student Achievement Award is Melissa Fonseca, I believe I said that right, and the presenter is Torben Ross, the principal.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Bridgman and City Council Members. My name is Torben Ross, I'm the principal of Hunter Huss High School. It is indeed my honor tonight to introduce Ms. Melissa Fonseca for the 2014 Student Achievement Award. Millie is the daughter of Melissa Fonseca and Dr. David Fonseca. Millie brings honor to Gaston County Schools and the city of Gastonia because of her commitment to academic excellence, her leadership at Hunter Huss, and in the community, and for her outstanding contributions to Gaston County Schools. Millie is committed to academic excellence, she is pursuing the International Baccalaureate Diploma. The International Baccalaureate Diploma is a rigorous set of college preparatory courses that challenge students to be globally-minded and to look beyond themselves. Millie is a wonderful example of this. Having been diagnosed with cancer at the age of four, she has overcome many obstacles since that time. Understanding the struggles of individuals diagnosed with cancer, she commits her time to reaching out to them. As a member of the council services of Gaston County Youth Advisory Council for six years, she has used her leadership positions in various clubs and organizations to encourage service projects such as collecting chicken noodle soup and Gatorade for cancer patients. Millie is quiet, is a quiet but effective leader. She is currently the president of the Interact Club, vice president of the Student Government Association, head delegate for the Model UN Club, and is the founder and captain of the Science Olympiad. Because of her initiative in founding the Hunter Huss Science Olympiad, she has left a legacy that will continue to offer our students an opportunity to challenge themselves outside of the classroom in the area of science. Furthermore, each year of high school, she has been selected to participate in some type of leadership seminar, including the Commissioner's Schools of Excellence, the Hobby Leadership Seminar, and in the Rotary Seminar for Tomorrow's Leaders. After reading all of this, it should come to no surprise that Millie was also selected to receive the Gastonia Civitan Citizenship Award during her junior year. Millie will attend Wake Forest University in the fall and plans to major in biology. Hunter Huss is, school is extremely proud of you, Millie. Your dedication to personal and academic excellence has wrought you much success and will continue to provide you opportunities in the future. Your integrity and leadership make you a very deserving recipient of the Gaston City's Council's Student Achievement Award. I give to you, Ms. Millie Fonseca.
Melissa, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Mayor, and the City Council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award.
Well, I guess, most of my thanks go to my parents and the school system for everything. I think that's about it.
Next, from Southwest Middle School. The winner of the Student Achievement Award is Alyssa Reed, and the presenter is Rebecca Huffstettler, the principal, and Nayla Sherrill, her teacher.
Good evening, I am Rebecca Huffstettler, principal at Southwest Middle School, and one of the greatest honors I have is giving teachers leadership opportunities. And when Alyssa was chosen as our student, her teacher, Ms. Sherrill, came to me and said, "Ms. Huffstettler, can I please be the one that introduces Nayla," no, that Alyssa introduces Alyssa to our council?" So without further ado, I give you her teacher, Ms. Sherrill.
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor and City Council. It is with a great honor to be standing here today to recognize this outstanding student, Alyssa Reed. There is something very special about this Southwest Middle School student. She embodies such a spirit of enthusiasm, humility, and kindness that one can't help but see her glow and feel her presence. You see, in the words of Langston Hughes, "Life for Alyssa ain't been no crystal stair." However, she has hurdled over her obstacles to run toward the finish line for success, and giving back is just a bonus of this packaged gift. Alyssa is a high achiever that works diligently to strive to earn the best grades possible. Her persistent determination has afforded her to be on the honor roll each quarter and has received several pride awards from her teachers. In the classroom, Alyssa's hunger for knowledge and thirst for excellence propels her to be a positive leader and role model for herself and her classmates. When living in Missouri, Alyssa started the Anti-Bullying and You Are Not Alone Clubs. In the Anti-Bullying Club, Alyssa and others educated students on the effects of bullying and created ways to help stop it. The You Are Not Alone Club was a group of students who came together to support each other during through, during tough, during rough times in their lives. Through the support and ability to talk things out, the club was successful at saving seven students from either cutting, suicide, or any type of bodily harm to themselves and others. Although Alyssa has not always had a life filled with rainbows, she has managed to spread her heart across her community ever since she was six. Her community involvement is impeccable. Just this year, Alyssa, Alyssa took the initiative to help raise money for a family in need at Southwest. She was successful at raising thirty dollars. She also donates to Toys for Tots almost every year, she has donated a hundred and three toys to date. Alyssa also has done park gardening with a few friends where they planted trees and flowers at a community park. Other volunteer work includes donating clothes, shoes, food, and medicine to crisis centers, participating in blood drives, providing canned goods to homeless shelters, and volunteering to, in soup kitchens. What is most amazing about Alyssa's community service is that her motivation is from within her own cognizance. As you can see, this young lady has been very busy with implanting and imparting into many people's lives. Alyssa Reed is a young lady that we will hear about one day in the newspaper or on the television. She loves to help people, and I quote, "When you give, you will feel much better about yourself. The more you give, the better you feel." Our community should be proud to have such a thoughtful, inspiring, and distinguished young lady. Alyssa Reed is an outstanding student, but even greater, an outstanding individual. Unfortunately, Alyssa is very sick and is unable to be with us tonight, so our principal, Rebecca Huffstettler, will be accepting this award on her behalf. Thank you.
Rebecca, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Mayor, and the City Council, we'd like to present this to Alyssa, and you'll get that to her.
I will, thank you very much.
And we'd be glad to come to the student.
Awesome, we'll take you up on that deal. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have from Webb Street School. The winner of the Student Achievement Award is Joseph Michael Davis, and the presenter is TC Dunlap III, the principal.
Good evening, Mayor Bridgman and Council, my name's TC Dunlap, I'm the principal of Webb Street School, and I'm honored tonight to recognize this young man, Joseph Michael Davis, as the Student Achievement Award winner at Webb Street School. Joseph is the son of Mike and Brandy Davis, he is the oldest brother of six children. His siblings are Sarah, Destiny, Elijah, Elizabeth, Blake, and Daniel. He is a special young man to his family and friends, and they are all very proud of him. Joseph is always extremely friendly, he is rarely seen without a beaming smile on his face. He loves to tell jokes and makes others laugh. That friendliness has earned him the respect of both staff and students and numerous awards over the years at Webb Street School. He has won several Character Education Awards and was recognized last year by the Gaston Civitan Club for the Outstanding Citizenship Award. Joseph also serves as the high school class president, an honor voted on by his peers. Always a hard worker, Joseph has participated in a variety of community-based training jobs, both on campus and off. He has worked at Hillbillies Restaurant, he's worked at Special Kids, for Special Care for Special Kids in 2008, Tabernacle Baptist Church, Bylow, Stowe Greenhouse, and Red Lobster. On campus, he has worked helping Mr. Stan assisting with the recycling program. He is dedicated worker and has proved to be an asset to our school and the businesses. He also enjoys volunteering with the kindergarten class as part of a senior voluntary program. Everyone knows that Joseph loves sports, especially the Carolina Panthers and Carolina Tar Heels. He is quick to let everyone know when his team is playing. This year, Joseph has assisted me, keeping me straight every morning, with the morning announcements. He does a great job reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and giving updates on ballgames that are taking place, and especially who has won the most recent game. Two of the highlights Joseph, over Joseph years at Webb Street School have been the annual Spider Bowl football game and the annual basketball game against the Sheriff's Department. As an avid sports fan, Joseph is always eager to assist Mr. Shaun in organizing, participating in the various games. This year, he helped his team beat the Sheriff's Department in basketball. Joseph participates in a variety of church activities at First Assembly Church of God with his family. He also assists with household chores and takes care of the family pets. Next year, Joseph plans to work at Gaston Skills. Joseph, your family, friends, teacher, and me all wish you the best of luck. We're very proud of you for all you've accomplished at Webb Street School over the years and wish you nothing but the best in what the future holds for you. Again, this is Joseph Michael Davis.
Thank you. Joseph, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the Mayor, and the City Council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award. Congratulations.
All right, next, we have York Chester Middle School. And the winner of the Student Achievement Award is Teddy Buckley, and the presenter is Lorenz Bruce, Brucey? Am I saying that right? Brucey, sorry about that. The principal.
Good evening, Mayor Bridgman and City Council Members. My name is Lorenz Brucey, I'm the principal at York Chester Middle School, and it is my pleasure to introduce this evening the representative from York Chester Middle School, Teddy Buckley. Teddy is genuinely one of the nicest people you could ever hope to meet. Couple that with an unwavering work ethic, and you can see why this compassionate young lady is well-respected at our school by peers and teachers alike. Away from York Chester, Teddy is an active member of St. Michael's Church Youth, often spending her Saturdays volunteering at their thrift store. Currently, she is dedicated to completing, completing her sacrament of confirmation. During the past several summers, she has volunteered at the Salvation Army Church, I'm sorry, the Salvation Army Soup Kitchen as part of a mission outreach. Teddy has been cheering since she was four years old with, first with Main Street Dance Works in Mount Holly, and then with West Gastonia Optimist Club. She currently is on the Trinity Force All-Star Cheer Team that recently won overall grand champs at the regional competition in Hickory. Her cheerleading involvement has provided her with numerous experiences of outreach to area retirement centers and the homeless shelter here in Gaston County. At York Chester, Teddy serves on the student council and plays in our band. Not surprisingly, she co-captains our cheerleading squad where she has won the Spirit, the Cheer Spirit Award two years in a row. She also participated on the soccer and softball teams at York Chester. Teddy is a member of the York Chester Robotics Team that placed second at the Robo-Gaston 2013 competition and then advanced to the Western Regional Competition. This year, Teddy was a driver on the robotics team that won first place in the robot run at the Robo-Gaston. at the Robo-Gaston 2014 Competition. As you can see, Teddy is a well-rounded student with diverse interests and at the same time has remained a fixture on the A.B. Honor Roll, receiving the Cougar Ace Award two years in a row. The Cougar Ace Award is given to a student for their commitment to academics and excellence. Teddy's dream is to become an elementary school teacher someday and has already started on that goal by using her siblings Maxwell and Cooper, age five and three, as guinea pigs. We are honored to have Teddy represent our school at the Gaston City Council Student Recognition Day. She is a very deserving young lady whose achievements are a result of an innate work ethic and a supportive nurturing family. Mr. and Mrs. Buckley, you have a lot to be proud of in how exceptionally well your daughter conducts herself. We at York Chester have enjoyed our time with Teddy and do not doubt that she will continue to live up to the high expectations that we all have for her. I present to you Ms. Teddy Buckley.
Teddy, on behalf of the City of Gastonia, the mayor and city council, we'd like to present you with the Student Achievement Award. Congratulations.
Thank you for this award.
Congratulations.
Okay, next is the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council Senior Recognition, and I'm going to step down with Councilman Kearsaw and Mira.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The mission of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council is to serve the common good of the community and provide a voice for the city's youth while organizing and participating in community service projects, strengthening relationships among all members of the community, building a non-competitive spirit between students of Gastonia Area Schools, promoting youth participation in governmental affairs, and acting as a resource for any city organization upon request. This year's council of twenty-two students represented Ashbrook, Forest View, Gaston Day, Hunter Huss, and Highland School of Technology. Their participation in the annual Run for the Money event helps to fund community service projects which for this year involve providing a dinner meal for the Boys and Girls Club of Gator Gaston and purchasing supplies for participants at ASWON Ministries. The group takes great pride in being able to touch the lives of participants of these agencies beyond simply giving a gift, as they incorporate site visits with special programs and social interaction. They are truly goodwill ambassadors for the city of Gastonia. Tonight, I am pleased to present to you our senior class, who represents some of the finest young people that the city has to offer. And so if everybody would stand up and the seniors come forward, please.
We'd like to recognize all of the individuals, and so from Ashbrook High School, we have Tyler Brown, Solomon Collins, Chandler Kay, Scott Krazek, Rachel Purvis, and Patrick Roseman. And then to present the awards to the seniors, we have Chandler Kay. Also a senior, we have Rachel Purvis. All right, and from Forest View High School, we have Rashini Amerasing, Jenny Badra, Max Flores, Kalen Forbes, Jeffrey Friday, and Adam Rooney. We don't have any seniors this year from Forest View, so we've got a good class up and coming. Okay, from the Highland School of Technology, we have David Pedraza, Katie Perrello, and Jenna Suarez. David Pedraza is a senior at the Highland School of Technology. From Hunter Huss High School, we have Caleb Griffin, Sarah Hopper, Sidney McDaniel, Matty Moore, and Aaron Romlin. Our seniors are Caleb Griffin, Sarah Hopper, Sidney McDaniel, and Aaron Romlin. And from Gaston Day School, we have Gray Heath, but he is not a senior, but we did want to recognize him.
She.
Excuse me.
She.
And if you would just give a round of applause to all of our mayor's leadership.
I suppose you didn't want the mic.
I'm very surprised you didn't want the mic.
Oh, have a good time. I know that's where you're going. Where are you going? Oh, where are you going? Oh, that's a good one in Boone. Where are you going? Where? Oh, yeah. Have fun. Where are you going? Oh, good. And then what you're making? Go for it. Chapel Hill? Is that in, uh...
North Carolina.
Congratulations, sir. Good luck. Yeah, there you go. Oh, I know. It's already chapel, I mean, not incidentally. You got one of those?
Folks, I think it would be appropriate, after what we've seen from the time this meeting has started and all of these, all of them, from the other groups, all of them, I think that it would be good, a motion would be in order to make it mandatory that these folks come back to Gastonia after college and live here. I just think that that's, that would make us all feel good, so, well, we got a second on that. I just make it mandatory. In other words, you can go, but you've got to come back. This is a little bit different for a city council, but we don't mind being a little bit different. I would like at this time to, and this will be very short and sweet, I'd like at this time to call the Reverend Josh Bear and his family, if they are here. We would like to see them. Yeah, he's coming. He got up and gave it that. Like for you to come up, if you will, any and all. He wouldn't miss it for the world. There, they're coming. And I'll let Josh introduce them in just a moment. Hello. On April the twenty-eighth, well, first let me say Reverend Bear is Associate Minister and I think Minister of Music at Crampton Free Wheel Baptist Church, and has been, and very well thought of, undoubtedly a very smart individual. And maybe, I don't know if he'll ever get into politics or not, but we'll check and see. But on, if you happen to be watching, at seven-thirty on NBC on April the twenty-eighth, Pat Sajak and Vanna, we remember Vanna very well from Myrtle Beach, that's been on forever. And so Pat goes over and he's introducing the guest, or the contestants, and he says from Gastonia, North Carolina. Now, this is from LA now, all the way across is Josh Bear, and I just want you to know, I think he won so much money that the city, we want to talk to him about a loan, you know, loan. But I talked to Josh and I asked him to come today, tonight. I'd like to read to you, if I may, and then I'd like for you to introduce your family, Josh. "A certificate of appreciation presented to Josh Bear, celebrating your exemplary representation of the city of Gastonia on Wheel of Fortune, Monday, April the twenty-eighth, 2014. Presented this twentieth day of May, 2014, by the mayor, the city of Gastonia." This is what we always love about our city. We hear the bad, we hear the good, we hear the indifferent. But this was wonderful just to sit there in the comfort of your home and listen to him talk about your city. And we're proud of you. He's been here a while, too. He is a resident of the city of Gastonia, they are. And so Reverend, we're so proud of you. We're glad of what you did, and we'd like for you to have this.
Thank you, sir. Glad to have my family here tonight. This is my wife, Christie, and my daughters, Meredith and Madison, and our son, Jackson. And we've been in Gastonia for several years now and have enjoyed raising our family here and hope to be here many years to come. Thank you very much for this.
Oh, is that who we were looking for?
Just a welcome surprise, which is that it had given us a warning then. The, yeah, proclamation, National Safe Boating Week, May seventeenth through the twenty-third.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to call up John C. Brindle, Flotilla Commander for the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, and I believe you have somebody with you, sir? We have a very important proclamation this evening regarding recreational boating. And we all know that without some safety devices built in, that recreational boating can turn quickly into tragedy. And tonight's proclamation outlines some of the very basic steps to make sure that the outing that you have on your boat is a safe and enjoyable one. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and we are fortunate to have sufficient waterways to enjoy a wide variety of pleasure boating activities. And whereas the vast majority of boating accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, such as not knowing or obeying the navigation rules or nautical rules of the road, drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear a life jacket. And whereas many of these boating accidents cause injury and loss of life, on average, seven hundred people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and approximately seventy percent of these fatalities are caused by drowning. And whereas one simple task, wearing a life jacket, can reduce the number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year by approximately eighty percent. A significant number of boaters who have lost their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, if people are aware of the risk, they are likely to take precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family when boating, which is why it is important to continue to spread the messages of boating safety, not only during National Safe Boating Week, but also throughout the entire year. Therefore, I, John Bridgman, mayor of Gastonia, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May seventeen to twenty-three, the year 2014, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. And I encourage all those who boat to wear it and practice safe boating habits. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this twentieth day of May, 2014. Mayor John D. Bridgman.
Gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, council members. I'm John Brindle, Flotilla Commander for Lake Wally. On Saturday last, which was the kickoff day for National Safe Boating Week, we held a large event at the Buster Board Bridge Boat Ramp, which kind of connects North and South Carolina, which shares our lake. Our major focus for National Safe Boating Week this year was to support the children on the lake, and we outfitted some twenty-odd life jackets for children and several adult jackets, because improper fit is what really kills our children. We partnered with Duke Energy and Safe Kids of the Carolinas. They gave great support to this program, and we have established with them a loner board at the Buster Board Bridge Boat Ramp and at the South Point Landing and at the Ebenezer Park Landing. We unveiled a brand-new board at the Buster Board Bridge Ramp, where we will establish life jackets for a day's loan. You pick up the life jacket, you bring it back, return it to the board. It's a very huge lifesaving program. We partnered with many vendors, many corporations through the area, many here in Gastonia, that provided the support for the board, the life jackets, and other equipment that we were able to provide to our children. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for your support.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Nobody spoke to you.
Thank you for what you're doing, you push right everything. Thank you for what you did, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Nobody spoke to you.
Thank you for what you're doing, you push right everything. Thank you for what you did, appreciate it.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
And the health, safety, and comfort of our communities greatly depend on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and efficiency of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance, are virtually dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public works personnel, and whereas the effectiveness of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is significantly influenced by the attitude and understanding of the importance of public works activities by our citizens. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Gastonia do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 to 24, 2014, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the many services provided through public works and to recognize the contributions that public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I herein to have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina, to be affixed this 20th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2014. Mayor John D. Bridgman. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just want to say, although I think the proclamation covers it very well, how much we appreciate your support in what we do. I'm tremendously proud of the people that work in the public works areas of the city, in the utility operations, and in the many services that they provide. We know that you know that they're the backbone of the city, and when they're doing their jobs and doing them well, everything is humming in the background. They also respond to those emergency moments. I know during the weather events that we went through, that you saw them at their best in the very rapid response to the outages in the electrical system, to the daily activities of the water flowing in the street that we drive on. These are literally the finest people that I've ever had the privilege to work with, and it's a pleasure to commend them to you. Kenny is very representative of them in that he is tremendously camera shy, and his partner in crime, Johnny Shannon, in fact, is so camera shy that he didn't show up tonight. I have a feeling that he saw the crowd of people here and probably panicked a little bit. While they are camera shy, they are the very best of people. In Kenny's particular case, as a representative, we will miss his tremendous experience. He literally has been that concrete guy. His handiwork exists all over this city, of most note in the new park facility that the city has, which he was very proud to be a part of. Mr. Shannon likewise, working in our stormwater utility, and they are just some of the very, very many, very excellent staff that we have in those areas. So on behalf of those people, we thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir. Men? Kenny, would you like to say something? Gentlemen, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve this proclamation? There's a second.
And can we also approve the water safety as well?
Kenny, you just, you just don't have, and I'm not going to be able to be at your retirement party. I'm sorry, I'm going to be on a tour. But come see the party. He's just too good. He's too good. Y'all need to capture him, capture him and handcuff him. Oh, I'm sure he did. I don't blame you.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor. And also, is there a motion on the boat safety before? Second discussion, all in favor. Okay. I think we caught up to date. Okay. Moving along to item F is public expression and, okay, public expression, and each person that's signed up, which it looks like there's, first I've seen it, but I'm looking, it looks like maybe 11 persons, the, each person's limited to a total of five minutes speaking time, and we'll be, like me, just go on and on and on, but we will have to remind you that your time is up, please, to stop. We also be reminded that the rules are that the council listens and takes note, but cannot respond, and so certainly no questions are asked there. The first one is Charles Rock, is it Duncan, 2162 Scottwood? Mr. Duncan. And after Mr. Duncan is Carol Simmons on Harper Lane.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Charles Duncan. I live on 2162 Scottwood Drive in Gastonia, and I'm here to join my neighbors in opposition to the C2 rezoning of the Powell property between Maplewood and Glenwood. In my neighborhood, we are homeowners. We are not real estate investors. Our homes are our largest single investment, and we, that we have to raise our families and to live out our lives. We have purchased our property with certain expectations, covenants, and restrictions of our neighborhood for our mutual protection of our property and the quality of life. We feel this is now threatened by this commercial intrusion to our neighborhood. Mr. Clay, who represents the piles in the sale of this property, made a statement at the last hearing that the rezoning, that our neighborhood is against any change. This is not accurate. We are opposed to any unconditional, unsystematic change. Once classified as broad C2 zone, the city and the neighborhood will have little, if any, control over what commercial businesses can be purchased and build on this property with no considerations of the impact to our neighborhood. Your vote to affirm this rezoning makes a statement to the citizens of this community that the disposal of property takes precedence over the impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Mr. Clay also argued that the impact will mostly be to the Powell Trust property south of Glenwood, and that this residential property will be a buffer to the neighborhood. Yet the commercial property for sale signs remain on this property, and since Mr. Clay also stated that it is common sense that no one would want to build near commercial property, he is telling you that soon he will have an application for rezoning of this property submitted to the commissioners and to you to approve as you have done so far. We realize there are competing interests here, but we ask those who voted to rezone this property C2 to reconsider your vote. I see no unreasonable impediment to the piles to wait until they have potential buyers to submit plans for this property before rezoning so that the impact of the neighborhood can be reasonably assessed and systematically planned. Or at the very least, we ask you to reduce this rezoning to a C1 conditional that minimizes the impact on our neighborhood. Otherwise, your unconditional approval makes this statement to our neighbors in Gastonia that they are one application away from having a disruption of their quality of life and a decrease of their property value, as Mr. Clay has already stated. Is this the kind of stewardship you envision for the citizens you represent? Your values by your actions are very important input for our consideration when it comes time for our vote, and I appreciate the time to let me speak.
Thank you, sir. Carol Simmons, 655 Harper Lane, and next is Ashley Jenkins on Montclair.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. As you said, I live at 655 Harper Lane. I've been there since 1992. I've been very excited to be a resident of Gastonia. I've always liked living here. I moved from Illinois to here, and I've always believed it was one of the best places to live. I now have a family, and they're growing, and I like living here, and I like, I chose where I live because it's very wooded, we have deer, and all kinds of animals and critters. That's the drawing card, because we're so close to where, to major roads, but you can also feel like you're in the woods. My son can go out and play, and I'm not worried about it because of the area, the way it is. But what I came to talk about was, this city has been recognized as the All-American City three times. Recently, you got the U.S. Conference of Mayors gave Gastonia the Top Livability Award as the best place to live and work and have quality of life. We in the neighborhood feel very threatened right now that our quality of life of where we live and where we've chosen to live is being threatened, as Mr. Duncan said. Another award that this city has achieved, achieved great things. They were recognized for their zoning codes, but yet through this whole process, it seems as though a lot of the code is being disregarded. Well, that's just a guideline. Well, C2 is highway. There is no way that Glenwood is a highway. It doesn't have the infrastructure, it doesn't have the roads for it, and the impact that a C2 would do is huge to our neighborhood. You've heard all of it. We've given it, now it's just making a plea that you will consider the impact and the quality of life. Downtown has their brochure and logo of great people, great place, and great promise. Great people, we've had youth here today that, you know, we hope they continue and come back, as the mayor said, to Gastonia for a great place to live. We have great neighbors. When this issue came up, we've all come together and worked together, and it's been a great place to be and great people. And now the promise, the great promise, is now up to you. Is the promise going to be that we will build commercial at all costs, increase congestion? You already know that Cox Road and Franklin is extremely congested, and you're already having to do a study for that area, and this is just a little bit off of that? Or, and the impact to the residents will be huge, the negative impact? Or is our promise going to be to continue so that Gastonia can get the livability award again? We ask that you consider something far less than C2. Transition it down. Transition it to small commercial, a commercial one, where it can be attractive, it can be, it can be attractive, it can be small, it can actually enhance the neighborhood. We're not against change, but we are against changing, we are against impacting our quality of life, and we ask that you, we find some way to continue quality of life and still promote business, because business is important. Small business is very important, and this would be a great area, I believe, for small business to build. It's the backbone of our country. So we ask that you take this all into consideration, reconsider the C2 zoning to oppose that, and hope that we have a promise of great livability award in the Thomas Acres Gardner Park neighborhood because of the, what will happen on Glenwood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ashley Jenkins, next is Michael Dean.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Ashley Jenkins. I live on Montclair Avenue. My property borders the Powell property. I feel voting down the C2 rezoning request tonight would be best for Gastonia. I would like for city council to approve the property for C1 conditional. C1 conditional provides a more attractive build that is enhancing and blends better with existing neighborhoods. C1 conditional also brings better jobs, more technically skilled jobs, higher paying jobs, and more jobs per square foot of build. C1 conditional has worked well for Charlotte, Mooresville, Davidson, and other areas with existing neighborhoods, and I feel like C1 conditional would greatly benefit Gastonia and all its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Michael Dean on a different issue here.
Michael, Mayor and councilmen, I feel a little out of place. I'm not here about real estate tonight. I'm here about the ABC. I live at 3816 Sherwood Circle. I do have a resume. I'm here to talk about ABC tonight. Can I give you a resume for the council? It may come up about ABC appointments in the future, and I'd just like to present my case. I'm a local person. I've been born and raised here. I lived here my whole life. I graduated from Ashley High School, Gaston College. I got a BS degree and a master's degree from Appalachian State University. I've always worked with numbers. I guess you'd call me a numbers guy. I worked for Carolina Freight for some 15 years, and one of my primary jobs there was working up and submitting $650 million budgets at that time, when I was at Carolina Freight. I left prior to the company being sold and started Rapid Cash Refund. My wife and I built the company from the ground up. We've worked hard, and we've been very blessed with our endeavor of building the company. I've learned a long time ago, you can always learn from someone else. Every year, I ask my employees, and we do employ up to 24 part-time and four full-time employees, tell me what you suggest that we can do to make our company better. And every year, it surprises me that the employee with the least amount of job function always comes up with one of the greatest suggestions that usually makes my company more successful the next year. And that same suggestion and same ability, we used to use in the ABC system when I was on the board there. I was, when I was on the board before, I was heavily involved with the merger of the Mount Holly and the Dallas business arrangements, which there, they're totally two different business entities. As we begin our merger with Mount Holly and Dallas, we would learn from each merger. And also while serving on the board, the board, we also learned that it was not always in our best interest to merge with every municipality, because sometimes merging with other municipalities, it would not be in Gastonia's best interest. So sometimes we would just say no. In the early 90s, the previous board made the decision to close the West End store, which was a good decision because it became unprofitable. But in the late 90s and early 2000, the West End started to develop, and a lot more homes were being built. But the citizens there were not being served with the sale of controlled spirits. So I started looking at possibly considering opening up a store on the West End. But in a board situation, democracy's rule. But in a board situation, democracy's rule, so it took some five years to get a majority, to get the board to consider opening up a West End. And I'm very pleased that it did not take a long time to put profitable dollars to the bottom line, and then since that time, those profitable dollars, of course, end up going to the city. My wife and I, we've been successful in our business, and there's not anything that I want from the city or anything that I hope to gain. I know I can make a difference, as I did before. What I'd like to do is, tonight, is if it comes up, I'd like for you to consider making a nomination and taking it to a vote, and I would consider it an honor and a privilege to once again serve you on the Gastonia ABC Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next one signed up is Cindy Boyer, 2223 Glenwood Drive. And after that is Mr. Glenn Silverman at 2101 Scottwood. I'm sorry I didn't progress in fast enough.
My name is Cindy Boyer. I live at 2223 Glenwood Drive. I'm right across from the proposed rezoning area. It's going to affect us more than anything, that and my neighbors, Trish and Moises. I'm here to ask that you vote down C2 unconditional for what it will do to our property values and the neighborhood, but also what it's going to do right down here at Cox Road, because we have such a traffic nightmare with all the new construction and everything else. There's a traffic study about to come out. As to that, I would ask that you wait for it, please. I see Glenda and David are in the audience, the Powell children, and I'd just like to say, your mom was a wonderful woman. I never got to meet your dad, but when the trees were coming down, I went down, as everybody stopped at my house, to ask what was going on, because we were all scared that there was going to be something going on. And she goes, "Not to worry, it would never be anything other than residential." Well, your mom dies, and now you guys are trying to get commercial land. This is our home, and your parents wanted nothing more than for this to be a buffer for that land, for the neighborhood. They never wanted to see anything commercial there, and I'm asking that you not do that. If there were anything in my heart to ask you to do, would make a park for your parents and ask for perpetuity as a tax relief for you all, but that if wishes were, if wish were true. But I would like to ask the City Council right now to just vote it down and give the neighborhood a chance. I mean, if they want to come back and ask for C1, let them do that, but do not give the blank check to someone that we don't know. I mean, Mr. Clay could sell to someone, and they said they wanted to do this. Well, that's great, fine. They buy the land, and they do something none of us want. Well, you gave them permission. By giving unrestricted, it's giving them permission. I'm asking right now that you vote it down, and let's come up with something that works for everybody, please. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Glenn Silverman, please. And after Mr. Silverman is Randolph Taylor, Thomas Trail, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council, my name is Glenn Silverman. I live at 2101 Scottwood Drive. I thank you for your time in hearing us during the public expression to voice our concerns and speak about what we believe is our opposition to a C2 unrestricted zoning approval for the Powell property boarding Glenwood Drive and the other factors that you know of. I would just like to briefly speak to the City Council. Again, something that I had mentioned last month about interests. We all have our own interests typically at heart, whether it be personal property interests, the interests of the government, the interests of a trust, or a family, or for the public good, as brought by Cindy with an idea for a park. You, as voted members of the City Council for the City of Gastonia, the great place that this is and the great promise that we, your citizens, ask you to carry out on a day-to-day basis in your jobs is to do what is in the best interests of the city and your citizens. I understand this also in my job on a day-to-day basis. I am a government employee, and I am charged with doing what is in the government's best interests. And at times, there are certain decisions that we have to make, where we have to agree to disagree about certain points, but you have to look out for, at the end of the day, what's going to be in those best interests. At this time, it's our opinion, the citizens of the surrounding neighborhood, that a unrestricted C2 is not in the interests of the community. We would ask that you vote down the proposition as it is before you today, and that if, in the future, when the interests of the trust come back with a defined plan, something good for the good of the community and the good of its citizens, to protect its interests, that then we could reconsider our position as to what we believe is better for the neighborhood. Again, these things, in summary, we believe it is what makes Gastonia a great city, a great city for its great citizens, and we'd like to see its, its prospects and its people achieve, you know, the awards that we have had in the past, to go forward with our great future. You know, three meetings ago, one of my daughters had spoke, and as she used to walk through the neighborhood on foot as a pedestrian, five, eight years ago, she was able to do that. Now she's not. Whether or not she would reconsider coming back to this area based on the additional population, the stress on the neighborhood, the traffic flow, the potential for additional crime, and the impact on the area strongly weighs on her in the long run. She wants to come back for school, she wants to visit, she wants to do things, but as our youth, we grow, we develop, we try to make them into good citizens, are they going to come back and be citizens of Gastonia, or are they going to look elsewhere? Things like this, on days like today, and issues that we bring at hand, are the things that they see, we, as parents and leaders, that they will see the decisions that they make as we make them, whether or not this is a place that they want to be and become a citizen in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Randolph Taylor, 401 Thomas Trail, please, sir. Next is Nan Curlin, 2600 Thomas Trail.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and speak. I'm here to restate my opposition to the rezoning of the Powell properties, Powell Trust property located on Glenwood from RS12 residential to restricted to unrestricted C2 commercial. Considering the extensive topics that are to be addressed tonight, I will not restate the many reasons that I have for my position. Most of these things have already been stated by other folks. The one thing that I will mention is that recently, within the last 10 days, there was a very severe accident on Armstrong Park Road. The road was blocked from the Cox Road intersection all the way to Club Drive off of Armstrong Park Drive, Armstrong Park Road, excuse me, and which involved, there were approximately seven police vehicles, two rescue vehicles, a fire engine, and people that had to be cut out of their vehicles. I've lived on, at Thomas Trail for 33 years. I've never seen that happen, nowhere near that kind of severity. When you, when you stop, the egresses when Dunham was closed and two entrances, two Franklin Boulevard were eliminated, all the traffic goes to Armstrong Park, Armstrong Park Road. And when that happens, you have people who become anxious, who became frustrated, and they use the turn lane, it's a two-lane road with a turn lane. They use that turn lane and try to bypass the other traffic to get to the signal at Franklin Boulevard. And in doing so, when someone moves over from the other direction into the turn lane, it's the makings of a, of a major crash. And I don't know exactly the outcome of that, but I do know the road was closed for approximately from 6:30 or so till about 10 o'clock that night to clear that as a result. I do understand the Powell Trust's need to resone the aforementioned properties. I understand their need and their desire, and I would support a rezoning classification of C1 conditional. Thank you again for this opportunity to present my position, and I apologize for the dehydration that I'm suffering today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nan Curlin, 2600 Thomas Trail. Next is Becca Hurd, 2610 Thomas Trail.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for the chance that I had to speak with each of you in the council and also for your taking of your time to meet with us at the property and understand the dilemma that we're in. Please refuse the C2 zoning. Considering the fact that a portion of this property is already commercial doesn't mean that you can follow the adage that two wrongs make it right. A conditional use permit would give the council the opportunity to develop a transition from a busy Franklin Boulevard to our very verdant and family-oriented neighborhood. But as Cindy suggested, a memorial park would be an appropriate addition to our Gastonia. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Becca Hurd, 2610 Thomas Trail. Next is Karen Piercey, 405 Dunham Road.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Becca Hurd at 2610 Thomas Trail. And to start with, I just wanted to bring up what Cindy keeps forgetting to show you all, but we have 139 signatures from the neighborhood that was, that were collected from the initial, it was an appeal for the initial zoning for C3. So at this time, I guess, can I hand that up to you all? Thank you. Okay, so I too am opposed to the blanket C2 zoning. I think the close vote on this that we had last time has shown that this issue deserves more scrutiny and attention. We've still not been contacted from the real estate agent nor the property owners, and I think we would like to see this motion to be tabled or suspended until there's been a thorough review of both the original C3 line and then also further discussions about the properties that are currently zoned residential and as part of our neighborhood. So I would like to oppose the C2 zoning and, like others have stated, have Mr. Clay bring that up as C1 if that's what the Powells are interested in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Piercey, 405 Dunham Road.
Hi, everyone. Everybody is so congenial and so nice, and I'm afraid my attitude is not quite there. So I'm going to do my best to get through this without offending anybody. I would like to speak on behalf of the 90 homes affected by the decision to convert the 6.24 acres on Glenwood Drive to C2 commercial. This is not going to be pleasant, so I would suggest that you brace yourself, okay? City Council members are voted by the people, and from what I understand, for the people and for the best interest of Gastonia. It seems that this decision was a bit on the biased side and in the spirit of self-interest. It has been brought to our attention, the decision to vote C2 was brought up by a council member prior to the public hearing. It would seem to me that hiring an attorney, as well as hearing from your constituency as appointed members, it seems to have been handled in a very most odd and unusual manner. This person remains to be anonymous, and undoubtedly, we can understand why. In 1967, the zoning of the existing C3 just south of Maplewood is an antiquated zoning decision. I think if all, that the property, if all of this property were zoned residential and you were asked to consider a broad-based C3 in 2014, I do believe that none of you would consider a heavy commercial use for this location. The mere act of allowing C2 directly across from two residential properties is deplorable. The financial hardship that the city is asking them to endure is surmountable. The property I'm referring to was a purchase of $200,000, and the decision will be devastating to the Boyer residents as well as the neighbor adjacent to her. If the C2 must prevail, I believe that conditional use would be a fair compromise and a far better solution to this dilemma. C1 would be even better. I would give the City of Gastonia, as well as its resident, his residents, whom through property tax contribution is in excess of $300,000 per year to the city, at a chance at more of an appropriate use. In addition, I would ask the council or someone on the council to make a motion to zone the property I owe for offices of this parcel, which would be a far better transition to our neighborhood. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. The last one is, is it Mark McNeil? Mr. McNeil, if you'll give your address, please.
2291 Windborne Drive. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, and council members. I am just asking to be a part of a committee. I want to give back to the community which I live. This is the community where my daughter will be raised, where she will pick her friends, her girlfriends, her circle of friends, and the best way for me to give back is to help. I did when I was in Charlotte, and I want to do now while I'm in Gastonia. As you can see from my resume that was passed, I have experienced in Marine Corps, I'm an honorary discharge, Miss Marine. I worked as a financial analyst. I've worked security for the FBI. I've been an IT consultant for the last 20 years, and I've also been the homeowner, vice president of my homeowner association. I've volunteered as a track coach in Charlotte for the past eight years, and now that I live in Gastonia, I want to help the community here. I'll be starting a nonprofit next year that will help educate the people on budgeting, not credit counseling. I'm not giving loaves of bread, and I'm not giving fish. I'm teaching people to work with what they have, learning to budget with what they have, and showing them the programs that will help them attain a home. Ms. Myra Nichols Mercer has done an outstanding job for the city as far as helping people get homes. I want to assist her. What I see that is lacking in Gastonia is that other entities that will help her, other nonprofits that are going to help her, help the citizens acquire homes and be more vested in their communities. And by helping me get on this committee, that would be a great help for me. Please help me help the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, that's the, all of the public expression. We now will enter into consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion. All in favor? Okay. All right, now we are going into the regular agenda. Item three, public hearing, which I will declare open. Southwood Realty Company. Subject hearing involves considering the rezoning of 186 acres from RS12. Subject hearing involves considering the rezoning of point-eight-six acres from RS-12 Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Business District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Tiptman Road and Lowell Bethesda Road and is owned by Southwood Realty. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted four to nothing to deny the rezoning request. This item was appealed to the city council. Presentation, Mr. Drew Pearson, Land Use and Zoning Administrator. Drew?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item three is a rezoning request before you deny. It has been filed by Southwood Realty. They are the property owners of point-eight-six acres that's located at twenty-one-twenty-five Lowell Bethesda Road, and as you mentioned, this is at the corner of Tiptman Road and Lowell Bethesda Road. The applicant is requesting that the current RS-12 zoning of the property be amended to C1 Neighborhood Business. This item did first go to Planning Commission on February the sixth. At that meeting, Planning Commission discussed the rezoning, but they also discussed the intersection as a whole. There was some discussion about the road widening, Tiptman Road, and Planning Commission gave direction to staff to bring back in, in March at their meeting, an item to discuss as far as the future land use map for that area. They wanted to take a look not only at this property but other properties around the intersection to just, to really kinda decide, you know, what was appropriate there at that location. And did the street widening of Tiptman Road itself, as, as that is progressing, would that have any bearing on what that future land use plan might ought to say? That matter was advertised and taken back to Planning Commission at its March sixth meeting. They did give consideration to the future land use map, the properties in that area, but they did actually end up deciding not to make any kind of changes to the future land use map. So, that item had originally been continued from February to the April meeting, and then Planning Commission picked the rezoning back up at its April meeting where it did decide to vote four-oh to deny the request. One, one thing that I would like to point out in your staff report, there was a vote of four-oh, but it listed five names. Council, Planning Commissioner Kayler was not at, in attendance that night, so it definitely was a four-zero vote. Staff, when staff looked at the request here, given that the future land use map did call for residential in this area, not only for the subject property but the properties immediately adjacent to it and then near vicinity to it, staff did recommend that Planning Commission denial of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Pearson? Yes, sir.
Drew, do you know what they wanna put here? Do you know what they wanna put here? Sorry.
You know, it's my, you know, the applicant is here, and I'm sure that he'll, he'll be addressing you shortly. I don't know that there's any specific project in mind at this time, but I'm sure that he can elaborate on that.
And how, the property is what size again?
It's point-eight-six of an acre, little less than an acre.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Pearson? Okay, I have, thank you, sir. I have signed up to speak under, on the sign-up sheet for item three. Mr. William Ratsford, thirty-three-seven East Hampton Drive, Gastonia.
I'll be one of representing Southwood Realty and Triangle State tonight. The part of, that was not mentioned about the planning commission was, we had a pretty positive first meeting, and then we were asked to table it to go into the second meeting. The problem that came in is, they said the meeting would be in April, and we missed the meeting date, so there was no representation of Southwood Realty on the four-oh denied vote. Southwood Realty Company and Triangle State has been developing for over forty years in the city of Gastonia. We are the largest private employer in this town. From our past experience, we planned, developed, managed, built, or continuously maintain many of the major residential developments that would, that would have been pillars of this community. Some of them may include Brentwood Chase, Hudson Woods, the Village of Valentine, the later phases of Riverwood subdivision, Susan Farms, Governor's Square, and many more. As we, as we look for the future areas of development in the city, the intersection of Lowell Bethesda and Tiptman Road will become, will gain ever greater importance. This parcel has lost over a quarter of, a quarter acre due to the widening of Tiptman Road, and, and it could lose even more with the future widening of Lowell Bethesda as As the roads come closer to the existing home, we are looking for the opportunity to build a community business opportunity when the time presents itself. The zoning we're asking still allows a residential use, but also allows the growing potential of the area with a business that can cater to the surrounding neighborhood. We ask for what better sign can you show developers in the, coming in and looking in this town by approving a rezoning that doesn't have a single citizen complaint, that can improve the current area, increase tax values of the existing property, and work in what you consider of your rezonings and what you look for of commercial corners in your towns. We ask that with the, the current area of the residential areas of that, of the, is not going to be the same as it was. The, the expanding of Tiptman Road will change traffic flow. The future expansion of Lowell Bethesda will change traffic flow like once more. We see the, in the, we see that it may, the current zone, the zoning that we are proposing may not fit currently with the existing residential plan of, of the city, but the expansion of these roads changes the whole view of this area.
Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Ratsford? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Mr. Ratsford, what are you planning to put there?
I will, I will let my grandfather ask, uh, answer that. If you don't mind, if I could table that, too.
That's fine.
Wait just a minute. Well, I'll call on him, 'cause you gotta have, you gotta have it on the tape. We'll listen.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I, I have another question, sir. I, going back to the planning board commission decision that you referenced, are you indicating it was, the decision was such because you weren't there? I, I didn't really understand that part.
What, what happened was, in the first meeting, it looked, it looked like we were going to approval, and the city attorney asked about a spot zoning and recommended this, recommended the planning commission go back to think about the current map. And since we did not, since we're waiting for the Tiptman to be expanded, there was no, there was no reason for us to not grant two months' time of delay. Now, we said, this meeting was said to be in April. I had someone call March, the last week of March on when the meeting would be, and they missed, got the voicemail, and the first time I got the voicemail of when the meeting was, was the day after the meeting was held. And I would, I would grant to say the opinion of the planning commission can be greatly altered by the, by the presenter not being present.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. And you have the questions of Mr. William Ratsford? Okay, Gene, Mr. Gene Ratsford, senior. Step up over here so we can hear. We like your voice, and we wanna hear it on here.
We have built units in this town for a long time. We quit building about twelve years ago. At that time, we had the finest apartments in town. Those apartments now aren't as fine as they used to be because people are doing stuff that is nicer. I have the opportunity of having my grandson come with the company. I told him just to go get the thing rezoned if he could. I started building A-grade properties, like the new property of Valentine out east. We also built one in Cramerton. We built an A property with garages and everything. In Hendersonville, we just finished it. We're going to build in Asheville. We've got two properties going there due to me being able to use him. He is the future of the company. We are not gonna build anything there that is not nice. We have more people on the payroll than any private company in downtown Gastonia. We took the old filling station that everybody hated up there on our corner. We made a parking lot out of it. A guy up in the city came running over and said, "What you gonna do? You gonna make it nice?" I said, "Don't worry about it, go on," and so he left. We tore the service station down, we dug the tanks up, we paved it, we put an iron fence around it. We remodeled the old building, it's there. We're not in the business of building anything junky. My idea was that we're gonna have to brand these grade-A properties with a brand to separate them for the, from the other properties because it's, they hit a certain standard, and I had hoped that we could put an office building there. Not this minute, but in the future. We're about out of room up here in the old social service building. We have approximately forty-some people that work up there, all making good wages. We have about nine other people that work out of there. There are, come in and go out into other sections of the state. We've got about fifteen-hundred and fifty apartments. We're not in the business of building anything that the city of Gastonia would not be proud of. We're the only people that spend any money uptown of our own money. Everybody else got money, y'all had to pay everybody else to come up there. We spent our own money. We spent two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on that lot, taking the tanks up, tearing the service station down, paving it, and putting the fence around it. Now, you know, you can turn us down, and we have to put it somewhere else, but we wanna be here.
Any questions of Mr. Ratsford?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Ratsford, it, your thought at this point would be that you're going to put an office building there?
Yes.
Okay. So, I wanna know. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be one floor, two floors, three floors? And would it fit in point-eight-six? Plus, he was saying that they're gonna take land away because of the road this side, and they're gonna take.
Yes, sir. It would fit on there. We won't have many people in, in there. It will make, it will make a nice office. We started to build one on Robinwood Road, an office building. We're gonna build two to three stories out there, but this building in Gastonia became available. We were able to remodel it at one-tenth the price of building a brand-new one. It will probably be a one-story building.
Gene, just below your, this site that we're looking at on the map, going north, towards, towards Cramerton, about the turn, what's several doors down from, from this property on that, on your side of the road?
There's two tractor-traders parked up there on weekends.
Well.
Every week.
No, I'm talking about, is there not, when you come out, up above this property, is there not a, maybe that's grandfathered, but it's a convenience store. It's a, it's a store.
Yeah, there's, there's a convenience store right down here.
Spot zoning, that's the reason I asked. Now, on the other side, let's go, let's flip-flop over to, towards New Hope.
You go, you go towards the other, towards New Hope, of course, up to the intersection, there's stuff. You go out towards Highway twenty-nine, there's a bar and a recreation center, athletic center.
Well, just below this property on the other side of the road, though, there's a, whether zoned or not, I, I doubt it, but there's a, always forever been a truck sitting out there that's, what is it, garbage pickup?
Uh, there's a garbage truck at the creek sitting down there out in the man's front yard.
Yeah.
Uh, he has a nice house, probably two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar house, but he has a big truck that has New Hope garbage.
Okay.
Collection in it.
Ms. Craig?
Mr. Ratsford, do, does Southwood Realty own any more property in this area?
Uh, no, right up the street, they own Brentwood Chase, but it's in Triangle's name.
Right.
The two companies have gone together.
Oh.
I'm out of the business as per se, but the two companies are sister companies. Triangle is one and Southwood's one. And for various reasons, to pass this down years ago, I set it up this way so that they could get control and interest of it.
So, you don't have any other property down there that's undeveloped?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Question? Yes, sir.
Mr. Ratsford, just going back to what your, the thought of what your use would be, is this something that your, your corporation, in other words, you're, you're seeing this as your employees would occupy, or you're going to rent it?
We believe at this time, we would occupy. We're about out of town. If you'll come up there, we'll show you how many people work up there every day. That place was full of little rooms. It was built to house a lot of people. The first two floors, we have no rooms. We have rooms as narrow as eight feet now with people in it. The two top floors are full, downstairs is full of paper from records we have to keep for seven years. We have gone to paperless, but it will be sometime before we get everything paperless where we can clear all of that out.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. Is anyone wanting to speak from the planning commission? In behalf of the planning commission? Anything else, Mr. Pearson?
I, I have a question for Mr. Pearson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Gene.
Drew?
Yes, sir. Drew, talked about this in terms of ingress and egress with traffic. I mean, if you put an office building on a corner like this, isn't there some really serious issues there as far as getting in and out of that property if you've got, you know, obviously more than just a residential use?
Well, certainly, you know, when you put an office use on a corner versus a single-family residential use, it would generate more trips per day that would enter and exit the facility. When a property comes through for site plan approval through our technical review committee at a staff level, we are looking at pushing those driveways as far from the intersection as, as feasible to, to make the project work. So, we do try to balance, you know, what, what is happening there. Obviously, something like a office use would typically generate less trips per day than a commercial use would, so that, that would be beneficial if, if it were in fact to be an office use.
This, though, is a rezoning to C1, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And there are other uses besides office use that are allowable in a C1 zone, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, if this property was zoned C1, it wouldn't necessarily have to be developed by the current owners. It could be sold to anyone and be developed for any other C1 allowable use, is that correct?
Well, without it being a conditional-type rezoning request, anybody could develop, you know, whatever C1 uses would be allowed, light retail, you know, multitude of other things other than office.
Thank you.
Mr. Ratsford, did you, William?
I, I am a licensed civil engineer, but to just explain traffic on a corner, both these roads of Lowell Bethesda and Tiptman are planned to be left, three-lane roads, and your left-turn movement is your, tends to be the movement that holds up traffic. So, by having left-turn lanes in both of these roads, you do not have that problem of holding up tra, holding up moving traffic, plus the stoplight interception. You have a current stoplight there that will also help as it already reduces traffic. I also have the useless for C- also help as it already reduces traffic. I also have the useless for C1 zoning. You know, your C1 zoning was built to be a neighborhood zoning. It's made to fit in with the current neighborhood. It allows office buildings. It allows single family, but it doesn't allow anything offensive that you may be worrying about. There's not, you cannot put a gas station there. You cannot put a veterinary clinic with outside dog habitats. It's catered to be a zoning that can fit into a neighborhood itself.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Drew. Drew, the .86 acres, that's what it is right now?
That's correct.
Now, with the three-lane road going in, it's going to shave off some of that? And what would it be then?
I don't, I apologize. I don't have exact numbers. I know they're still doing right-of-way acquisition. I don't know if that's all been completed yet. I know they're still working on that. Whether, the applicant may be able to respond as to whether or not they've already been negotiating with the city, whether there'll be right-of-way or land acquisition on that side of the road or not.
Maybe that's something.
The .86 acres is what it currently is after the first hit with Tipton's roads rezoning. Now, what it did is we were the most greatly affected parcel in the fact that we're a corner, so you actually took the corner off of Lowell Bethesda to start working on that right lane transition. When Lowell Bethesda gets expanded in some point in time in the future, we will not be as greatly affected because some of the right-of-way was already picked up in this Tipton zoning. And to clarify what Grandpa was saying about the office building, he's trying to re-diverge. When he splits the presentation of our A-class properties versus the rest of our portfolio, it takes a few positions at that office to handle the high-end properties and make it distinctive and do our development services. There's still, the accounting and a lot of that will still stay in the central office.
Do you have any design at all for the building that you're contemplating here?
We're waiting until the end of, until we see what the road presentation will look like with Tipton. I mean, it's one of those things that you want the building to, you want the building to present itself correctly as it will be a forefront of one of our companies.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. A question for legal counsel. Ash, can we put a, if, obviously, if there were sufficient votes to approve this, can there be a restriction on there that if the property was sold and it was not developed as a office building as indicated in this testimony, is there a way a restriction could be put on there that they would have to come back for another approval?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Can we table this and have it, you know, until they get some type of presentation that they could, you know, present to the planning people? I mean, they're waiting for the road to be reshaped. I think that may be an order for us to do, in order to make a determination. That's just a thought I have. I don't know if I can make, I guess public hearings still open, so.
Yes.
Your Honor? Yes, sir.
I guess, taking Councilman Gallagher's statement a little further, what would be our timeframe on completion or enough of a completion of that area to give the applicant the ability to see what the final outcome would be in mitigating or developing his particular property with the building shape?
Mayor members and members of council, the roadway design plans are complete. I mean, it's curb and gutter, it's sidewalk and asphalt. We can provide those plans certainly to the applicant, but we are currently finalizing right-of-way acquisition, the utility overhead electric lines. That process will be starting soon, and then we will actually bid the construction probably within the next six months. But the plans are done. We know where the curb is. We know where sidewalk's going. Those are complete.
Going back to the applicant, sir, do you have that stuff?
We have preliminary indications on Tipton, but we don't have preliminary indications on Lowell Bethesda. And Lowell Bethesda is really where our property fronts. Now, we may ask on, if you want to restrict it as a conditional zoning, if we could keep it as an office building plus the single family, so we could run it as a single-family house as it's currently running as a rental house, until we set forth a time to come back through for the office building with your city staff. But then, that would limit, it would limit to what goes there, but it allows that office building and allows the current use in place. And then, you know, it allows council to say that these two options are the only two options that will be there, and allows the vote to continue. But I don't, I can check with, I can check with the rest of our office, but, you know, we don't need to table this zoning for six or nine months until we come up with something. And-
Yes, sir.
It sounds to me like you're not sure exactly what kind of office you're going to put there right now, which is fine. I mean, it's your property. You can decide to build where you want to, but I'm curious as to why we want to see a design. We say, "Okay, we'll bring us the design," and we're like, "Okay, well, we'll zone it C1." Well, they're not building right-of-way anyway, so let's say they decide that the current property they have downtown is sufficient for the next five years. Well, five years from now, a drawing he brings back in a month may not be what they want to build, and they change it. What did we accomplish by that?
No, I hear what you're saying, Councilman. My thought was, if that was something that wasn't provided to them already, they may have something in thought process, but until they see actually how it's going to be laid out, they're not going to push it forth. That was the thrust of my question, is they may have an idea, but until we actually see it, will this fit? How will it look? So, that was why I questioned the applicant in that
Yes, Mr. Bomadere.
Mayor and council just wanted to clarify one point. The city road project is the widening of Tipton Road to three lanes. Lowell Bethesda, while it is on the long-range thoroughfare plan to be widened to three lanes, there is no design, there is no plans, there is no funding at this point in time, whether it's by the city or the North Carolina DOT. It's on that plan, but it is not funded at this point in time.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second to it? Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, is there a motion? Yes, sir.
Could we, if we approved this, could we, Mr. Ratsford said restrict it to-
Too much that up.
I apologize. Could we restrict that to office and residential, as Mr. Ratsford suggested, and move on with letting them do this?
You can't, you could give him an office zone instead of the requested C1, but you can't restrict or condition the property because this is a straight rezoning. It's not a conditional rezoning.
Okay.
It'd be a downzone, I guess. All right. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Counselor, but if they were willing to enter into that restriction, does that change that at all as from what he's said?
We can't do it here tonight because it was advertised as a straight rezoning.
I understand.
And so, they'd have to come back.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion? Anyone?
I move to approve the request.
I will second here.
There has been a motion to approve the C1 and a second. Discussion?
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think this goes back to the basic precepts of the comprehensive plan and the fact that this area has been designated in the comprehensive plan to remain residential. I think that's the first thing. So, when we start to ignore the comprehensive plan, then a lot of times developers will start to get a little skittish because then there's nothing predictable about the comprehensive plan if we start, you know, altering that without due process. So, if someone wants to come in and place a large commercial development in a location, invest millions of dollars to do that, when we set these kinds of precedent, then if someone wants to come in within the same market area and request a rezoning, and we ignore the comprehensive plan, then the first guy says, "What's going on? You have a plan, and you don't follow your plan." So, then what makes the next developer so assured to want to come to our town if we don't have a plan that we respect? So, the planning process then becomes, you know, purposeless. And this is, I'm going real basic. I'm not even talking about the neighbor next door or the spot zoning effect of this. So, I think, you know, the intent is good, but it's not a conditional use permit. There's no guarantees here. We never know from one day to the next what may happen. This could be rezoned C1, and it could be, the property could be sold, change of heart. Maybe the property's not big enough for an office. Maybe the company grows. They decide to go somewhere else, get a better deal. But now, we have a C1 that allows for more than just office use. So, again, this is this concept of allowing something without a really good understanding of what it could be, or, in this case, unintended consequences. So, I would advise against this.
There is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Any other discussion? Yes.
This can be zoned as just office, plain office?
It was applied to be C1 so you could grant a less intense zone than C1, which would be one of the office zones. And I'd have to look to Mr. Pearson to go through some of those definitions, but, you know, as with the power rezoning that applied for C3, you approved it C2 because C2 was a less intense zone. That's the rules of zoning. You can give it a less intense zone than what they ask for. We can't give it C1 and condition it, though, because it's not a conditional use rezoning.
Okay? Yes, sir.
Go back to what I wanted, excuse me, what I suggested. They really want it for an office, and if we could get it restricted to that and residential, if Mr. Ratsford wanted, and drop it down one, if they would agree with that, the attorney says we can do that. I'd prefer to do that, and it would keep it residential now and then an office later. But I could vote for that, but I'm not going to vote to violate the comprehensive plan the way they're suggesting.
What I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing is that the, you're putting a condition, and, I mean, and it has to start over again if we re-advertise.
Can we just do it, he said we could drop it down one to office?
To just office, to just office.
Not for just office.
Would that be a business, he could build his office there with that?
I'm speculating as to what he wants to build there, but if you give him an office zoning, obviously, he can build an office there. I don't know that the office zones allow for residential anymore. I think we've changed that. Okay.
Did you?
Okay, okay. So, that would, but there wouldn't be any agreement to it, Councilman McEachran. I mean, you'd just be giving him a straight office rezoning, and then whatever the uses are listed in the code or the things he could do, or anybody he sells the property to. But agreement applies, restriction or an agreement applies a conditional zoning, which we're not doing a conditional tonight because that's not-
Yeah. Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the C1 as proposed here. If there's no other questions, let's vote. All in favor of the motion? Mr. Pearson, raise your hand. All opposed? It's defeated. Did you have the motion and then voted yes?
I didn't have the motion.
Oh.
You got to go somewhere.
Can you do another motion?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Can another motion be put on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Can it?
To less intense use than C1, it could be, yes.
What you got in mind?
Well, I would like to see that it go down a level, okay, and be voted on as just a office, okay? But I don't know exactly how to make that motion so that it is just an office, which is down from a C1, right?
Mr. Mayor, maybe as a matter of clarification, we have some office zones. If you would like, the staff could tell you what those office zones are and what is permitted, so that you would then have the zone that you want that would permit both an office and a residence.
Right.
And just as a matter of information, the public hearing has been closed, so if we're going to have some more testimony from staff as to those office things, if we could get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Some of-
Second here.
All in favor? Okay, it's open again.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
What I'd like is, I understand with, kind of where you were going, Mayor Protem. Councilman McEachran, could you restate, I liked kind of where you were going with that, but there was a lot of verbiage there. Can you restate that? And I want to make sure that what we're doing here is reflective of legality. Sir?
Mr. Ratsford had suggested they would like to have office, but to keep it residential now, if it is residential, but they would like to have it, a zone where they could at least build an office there. Could Mr. Ratsford just say, "No, I would vote for that"? And how would we, if we hear the staff some more about some of the ideas they may have, restrictions, that would be the direction I would go in.
I guess where I was going with that is, can that be crafted into a motion that we can act on this evening from the verbiage from Councilman McEachran?
I think that, you know, you're going to need to hear what some of the office zones are, and then if one of those seems to meet what you're talking about, you can downzone it to that zone.
Thank you.
I would just like to ask, make sure we're all on the same page. They want to turn it into office, but right now, there's a residence on it. They want to continue renting the residence. I mean, that's what they do is the rental business. So, we're just looking for something that makes them happy, that would be residential, but later converted to office, correct?
No, I believe also they wanted the ability to use that residence as a makeshift office, correct? Sir? I think that's what they said as well.
Make-shift office, rent it, whatever they wanted.
And if it's zoned office, they can use it as an office.
Okay.
If I could suggest, if Mr. Pearson could tell us a little bit about the office zones.
Sure. Good afternoon again. There are actually two primary office zones that I would like to kind of bring to your attention. There is what we call O1, and that's a light office zone. Good thing about that is it would allow them to accomplish the building of any kind of office there, but it also allows that single-family residence as a use by right. So, they don't really give up anything by, from a residential standpoint, in going to the O1. There's also an OLC that stands for Office Light Commercial that is also, would accomplish their desire to build an office there as well. Even in the OLC, a residential use is still a use by right. The difference between O1 and OLC is basically within the office light commercial, if someone chose to build a multi-tenant structure, multiple tenant spaces, the ordinance will begin to allow the blending in of some light commercial uses within that multi-tenant structure. There's a couple criteria by which they have- There's a couple criteria by which they have to follow. The individual commercial tenant space itself cannot be over 1,500 square feet in area. So that keeps it very small in nature, and nor can the commercial uses take up more than 50% of the overall square footage of that building. So in a multi-tenant office building, they could begin to blend in some light retail-type uses. Either O1 or OLC should accommodate what has been discussed here tonight.
Is that one floor, two floors, three floors?
The, the district really wouldn't get into the number of floors. There would be a maximum height of a structure, but it would not necessarily restrict them, you know, doing a one-story versus a two-story or a three-story building. And I can get those max heights if you would like.
So it's 1,500 square feet, first floor, second floor combined?
Yeah, keep in mind, the 1,500 square feet would only be for a commercial use in an OLC zone that was being kind of integrated into an office building itself. So if we get into a situation where just, just building a single-tenant office building, then the zoning ordinance itself is not necessarily going to get into the number of floors or restricting to 1,500 square feet. There are some maximum square footages, but they're going to be way beyond what a .86 acre or so tract of land would accommodate.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we reopen the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Hold on.
I'll vote for that.
I have a discussion.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Stewart?
I didn't think you.
Member of the planning.
I'd like to let you know that the planning commission was not privy to the information that's given tonight because Mr. Ratchford was not able to be there. So that's new information for us as well. So, okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
I know we've had some discussion between the city and Mr. Ratchford. Is there a preferred that you've come up with? I mean, is O1 suitable for all involved?
Don't do drew.
Drew, Flip, Mr. Ratchford, whoever, they're, they're all discussing. I'm assuming they came up with something.
I, I would prefer OLC, but we would, we would still be happy with O1.
Is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, close the public, public hearing. All in favor? Raise your hand, please. Okay.
I make a.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we do the zoning as O1.
Second here.
O1.
O1.
Yes, second here.
Discussion. No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, one opposed.
I can take that.
Okay. Board, leave that.
Can we take a break?
Yes. Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. They'll close our lights off here before long.
Yeah, I think it will.
What is next?
That's wonderful.
Oh.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. The item four, we all back. Item four is a second reading. Edith M. Powell Trust and Powell Realty and Trading Company. On April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the Gastonia City Council voted four to three to approve the rezoning. General Statute one sixty-eight seventy-five requires a second reading when the vote is balest in a two-thirds majority. The public hearing has been closed and may not be reopened. A second reading requires a simple majority vote in order to pass. This item is continued from the May sixth, two thousand and fourteen, City Council meeting. And of course, the motion was for C two as opposed to the request to C three. Is there a, on this second reading, is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
Motion to approve?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Oh, wait, I do have discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. I would look, I would like you to look at my decision to vote for this rezoning in three ways. Does it bring jobs? Does it boost our local economy? Does it match my voting record? Will it provide the opportunity to bring jobs here in the city? If it does, it's exactly what we need. Good jobs for the citizens of Gastonia. Will it create new prosperity for the city such as new water and sewer revenue, new electric revenue, new sales taxes, new property taxes? If so, great. The cost of everything continues to go up, as we all know. Gas, food, rent. So in order for us to keep pace with increased expenses, we need to create an atmosphere where businesses want to move here, build here, expand here. By allowing this to occur through rezoning and other means, we ensure businesses will create this new money to shoulder the tax burden and help us not to raise taxes on every single resident in the city. If you look at the first Harris Teeter vote, you will see I was one of the three that supported it, based upon my reasons I just mentioned. That vote on Harris Teeter ended in a tie. Three for it and three against it because the mayor had to recuse himself because he was the real estate agent. Now, ratchet ahead to the last Glenwood slash Powell property vote. The vote went the same way as the first Harris Teeter vote. Three for, the same three council people voted for it and the same three council people voted against it. This time, the mayor was able to vote and break the tie. There wasn't any smoking gun regarding my vote. I will continue to always look to vote for ways to help lower our taxes for all citizens of Gastonia. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. And the rezoning is C two is the, as was voted. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, all opposed. One, two, three. Okay, that is the second reading and councillor, that's.
It is adopted now.
It is adopted after a second reading. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Moon, just want to ask you if you could have the staff put road signs at the beginning, close to Robin, close to Franklin Boulevard, to say that the road is closed because people are constantly coming down there trying to, and it's going to be closed for some while.
Absolute.
Item five is a request to modify the Gastonia Code of Ordinances, Section thirteen point thirty-eight, Schools and Recreational Facilities. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted four to two to recommend that City Council repeal the recreation payment in lieu of fee presentation. Mr. Thorndyke Martin, Assistant City Engineer, Mr. Chuck Dellinger, Director of Parks and Cultural Services. Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight stems from a request by a group identifying themselves as the Gastonia Building and Development Task Force, and that is to repeal the payment in lieu of land dedication ordinance for subdivision development. Group has made presentations that involve several specific issues and concerns to the Council's Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee with the issue at hand being referred to the Planning Commission. Purpose and intent of the payment in lieu policy is to assist in planning for future growth and creates an alternate funding source for land acquisition and construction of new regional parks, greenways, and open space, rehabilitation of existing facilities, and provide new amenities as proposed in our adopted master plan. Funding for future park project needs, open space, and amenities will remain in direct competition with funds for existing park projects and recreation programming. As the city grows, it becomes increasingly difficult to keep up the level of service expected by residents, especially in areas where recreational needs are already lacking and where the population grows has and will increase the demand for new facilities. Recreation Advisory Commission unanimously endorsed this policy at its inception in two thousand and eight, and when the issue of the request to repeal it came forth, they again unanimously seven oh voted at their February twenty-fifth meeting to keep the ordinance as is. The item was brought before the Planning Commission at its April third meeting of this year. Staff made a presentation to the Commission and input was presented by the task force. There was a considerable amount of discussion by the Commission at this meeting, but there was no vote taken as there were only four members of the Commission present. It was decided the item would be continued to their May eighth meeting. At the May eighth meeting, the Planning Commission voted four to to repeal the payment in lieu To offer some conclusions and staff recommendations, we understand with the recent multi-year nationwide economic downturn, a valid case can be stated to support minimal fees to incentivize and encourage new growth and gain new customers to the overall tax base. And Gastonia the past year has exhibited a definite positive turn in the economy as a whole, although we realize the economy, the economic recovery still remains fragile. Balancing user fees as well as gaining new economic growth is critical to the ongoing stability of the city's tax base. Outside the fact that overall economic growth benefits the city in other positive ways, revenue generated by the payment in lieu of land donation policy in the simplest form is a means to balance this growth with providing additional quality of life features. When revenue-producing fees are eliminated, other revenue sources such as tax rates become the primary source for providing quality recreational amenities to the city. The other alternative is simply not being able to provide future enhancements or projects. It is recommended by staff in the city that the city continue to utilize the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Land Dedication and/or Payment in Lieu Development Program as new development will increase demand for new recreational facilities and place a burden on existing facilities and services. However, staff recognizes and acknowledges that possible considerations may be in order and necessary to help promote and spur development. One alternative or change for consideration could be placing a cap to the actual per-unit component of the fee adding not to exceed value for a period of two years. At the end of the two-year period, sufficient data should then be in place to properly assess the policy. At that time, the policy slash ordinance could revert back to its original form, continue with the cap in place, be changed, or even repealed. I feel there may be other considerations you may want to explore, so I respectfully submit this item to council for questions and discussion.
Any questions of Dellinger? Yes, sir.
Mr. Dellinger, now, the rent is from some lots could be two thousand dollars and some down to a lower amount.
Mr. McIntyre, the projects, the developments that are on the books right now, there are fourteen of them, the smallest is two hundred and one, and the largest was about twenty-two-hundred to twenty-three-hundred, twenty-three-hundred dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. I took an average, and I'm one of those, when you take an average of all fourteen, it came up to about six hundred and nine dollars. Well, I like to throw out the high and throw out the low and then come up with an average, and that came up to about five hundred and nine dollars was the average of those.
Those two thousand dollars, Mr. Mayor, seems kind of high. I wish we could reach a kind of a point where everybody got the same amount, maybe three hundred dollars per property or something, instead of somebody getting stuck with twenty-three-hundred dollars. That seems kind of excessive to me, in my, this won't work, the battery's gone, I guess. So that's just my suggestion that we not hit somebody for so much money at one time that we carry it back to where everybody maybe charged the same thing, but substantial lesser amount, like three hundred. I talked with the city manager about it today, and so that's just my suggestion. I just hate to see somebody hit too hard. Twenty-three-hundred dollars seems excessive. Maybe a lower amount would be more reasonable.
Yes, ma'am.
I've also had some conversations that I think that there's some inequity involved, and that's what concerns me more than anything. Explain a little bit more to me what, exactly how the cap would function, okay? And does that still keep into the formula of one-third of this or whatever that thing is? Is there something that can be done, just kind of like what Councilman McIntyre is talking about? Okay, if we had a set amount, okay, and it couldn't go over that amount, and we had a minimum and a maximum, help me understand where that all would flow.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, you can have a, set a minimum and a maximum, as long as you have a formula in place, you can set a minimum and maximum and a not-to-exceed maximum. The only thing you can't do is charge someone more than what the value of that property is when you're computing the formula. And that's the per acre, per acre price times the one-thirty-fifth, per acre price, one-thirty-fifth, and the number of lots in that acre. Right now, it's twenty-eight, basically, a simple way to look at it is twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents per one thousand dollars of value per acre.
Okay.
Maybe they need to come back.
Okay, yeah. So if we put a maximum on it of, say, three hundred dollars or three hundred and fifty or something like that, okay, then nobody regardless would pay any more on that than three fifty.
That's correct. That's correct. You can put a minimum on it, but if you put a maximum on it, you can do it either way. You can do, put a minimum and a maximum, or you can just have a maximum on it.
Questions?
I have just a couple of questions. So if a developer has a certain amount of open space or space that they develop into park-like amenities, then they don't have to pay this fee. Is that correct?
Dr. Curran, the property, the property that would be, is for public recreation purposes, the one-thirty-fifth of an acre would be, could be a land donation, it could be a combination of land donation and the payment in lieu, or, you know, the payment in lieu. Every way I've looked at it, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, the payment in lieu is going to be cheaper than the amount of land that would need to be donated. And that land would need to come before council and be a part of the city's master plan or greenway, greenway plan before it could be done through donation. And that has to be done at the first plat, before the first plat level, is that not correct? Or, yeah, before, not final plat, but first plat, right? When they're identified at the first plat? Yes, sir.
So the way it's set up now, it's less expensive for the developer to pay this in lieu fee than it is to pay in terms of a contribution of land that's suitable for public purposes. That's what you're saying? Is that correct?
Very, very, it's a very rare occasion unless there are some cases in greenway sections where some of that land is floodplain anyway, and when it, you can't build greenway in floodplain, but you can't build anything as far as development goes in floodplain. But if it's on the greenway plan, that's about the only thing I can see that would be recognizable, that it would be in their advantage to donate the property versus a payment in lieu.
So that is acceptable, is property that could be used for greenway?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. And then the monies that the city collects, all right, then are, obviously, they're put aside for park purposes based upon the districts and all that, and I think we know that pretty well. But the option to the developer is the fees that they pay to the city then are either absorbed by the developer or passed along to the future homeowner because it's on a per lot basis, correct?
At the present time, we are, and that's one thing that probably needs to be cleaned up in an ordinance regardless of what happens, is the original intent was for that fee to be paid at the permitting, you know, during the permitting phase, at the time of permit. It's written at the time of final plat that it would be paid at that time, all of it be paid at one time. But I went back and looked at my notes, Thorndyke went back and looked at notes from two thousand, two thousand and eight, and it never was an intent to put that burden on the developer who needs money to build roads, streets, you know, sidewalks, you know, those type things to develop the property. So for that, for that monies to actually wind up being as part of what the new homeowner is buying and go mainly on them and not the developer, that is when that fee is collected.
So that ordinance, that little terminology in the ordinance needs to be amended. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'm not going to speak for Mr. Smith, but I would, I would say that it does, we have, it has been interpreted that way, and that's when it has been, it has been collected, but I think it would probably need to be some wording tweaked to rectify that.
So regardless of our decision, we really want to clean that up in the ordinance? Yeah, because I don't think that's, that's certainly not fair to the developer, although we haven't been following the ordinance, you're saying, because we haven't been collecting the money at the time of the plat.
Well, until this issue came up, we, actually, I had not even looked at that, and the signed ordinance wound up having the language in it that was not how it was actually presented to council that night, is what our records and what our thoughts and recollections and the notes say was that it was the intent of it being, it being at that permit stage and not on the developer at the preliminary plat stage.
One last question, I'm sorry. So has staff developed, you know, some financial projections as to, you know, based upon the current number of developments that we have ongoing, the current number of lots that are available that would be subject to these fees? What kind of monies could be collected over time if all these lots were then permitted? We have an estimated figure for that?
If all of those were built out, it'd be about a million, about one point one, a million sixty-eight thousand somewhere in that neighborhood, if my neighborhood, my memory is correct. Is that close, Thorndyke? I think that's right. It's a little over a million dollars.
Okay, a little bit over a million dollars.
That's the fourteen that are on, that are previously under development at this particular time.
And I know this information, I'm just getting it out in the open for public record, okay? So now, has there been any discussions at staff level as to how any of these monies would be obtained to replace the loss of these revenues if this ordinance was changed in terms of, you know, if we go from a million down to five hundred thousand, we just expect that recreation projects will not be done as timely as they would have been otherwise?
They either will, will not be done, or they'll be put, the timeframe would be longer, or it would be competing with, competing with our budget in other ways if it's not there. I mean, the master plan has approximately thirty, thirty-plus million dollars in there. We're in the process of updating it, and we've completed several projects, and hopefully that number will come down. But there are definitely projects that any funds like this could help move forward with.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Craig, Mr. Gallman, Mr. Pierce.
I think he had his, Councilman Pierce all had his up first.
Go ahead.
If I look at exhibit five dash nine, okay, in the agenda book, that's got all of the subdivisions and the lots, and lots not subject to parks and recreation, lots subject to parks and recreation, and that's where the, over the million dollars comes in, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, if we had a cap, here again, I'm trying to still understand the cap, okay? We have a cap of, say, three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, whatever, if there's a cap there. Then you could mark through that second one of five sixty-three per unit. You could mark through the eight oh three, and all of those would be capped at three hundred or four hundred or whatever number that number is, okay? And I think you said it was an average of five oh nine.
If you throw out the high and the low, the other, the other average is five hundred and nine dollars a lot. And I failed to put that in my, in my presentation, I actually had the, you know, the five hundred dollars as a.
But that would be at the discretion of the council, whatever that maximum number would be.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
So take Bethesda Oaks, and right now, where we are now, they would be paying five hundred and sixty-three dollars for every unit they built. Is that right?
The hundred and forty that are subject to the fee, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But if we put a cap on it, then that number would come down if we lowered the cap.
It would be one forty times the number that you, that you set out there. Yes, ma'am.
Whatever that number we cap it at.
Yes, ma'am.
Per unit.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Then if you go down to Robinson Oaks, that's eight oh three. The same thing would happen with those two oh four lots, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Then if you keep going down where it says Villas at Robinson Oaks, two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars per unit.
Yes, ma'am.
And they would have sixty-two units, which would equal one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That number would come way down, right?
It'd be sixty-two times whatever that number is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, okay.
No, not sixty, you mean two oh four. That last comment that you said.
Because I guess they've already been built.
Times sixty-two?
Sixty-two lots at Robinson Oaks, that's the one she was referring to.
Oh, she got, I'm back at the.
Sixty-two lots times that number, yes, sir. Any of those are going to be that number times the maximum number you set unless they are under that maximum cap.
Yeah. Okay.
Two questions.
Okay, go right ahead.
Chuck, on exhibit five dash nine, the parking rec phase, you know, two oh five down to two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, why such a wide, is this a negotiable fee?
At this particular time, we do not have, we do not have anything in our, in our ordinance that would allow negotiation or would, you know, except by council approval, or to even allow the developer to petition or protest or to even, to even. or to even allow the developer to petition or, or protest, or to even, to even, um, I'm, I'm trying to find, I'm trying, I'm trying to find a, a word, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying it could protest the fee where they could, they could file something where you could actually, uh, uh, look at it to, to say, hey, this is out of whack, you know, why is this out of whack, and, uh, can, can we, can we look at this a little further? Now, I know that it was brought before attention, Fuquay Varina, actually, they actually have an application, and they also have a, a form where you can, uh, whether it's, I'm trying to think of the word for protest, but it's...
Contest.
A, a, to contest it, yes, that's correct, to contest, uh, to contest that number.
But why the varying fees, like, why, why isn't, why isn't there any...
The value of the property, per acre, per acre price of the property.
So it goes back to page five eight, where it's eight fifty-seven?
That is actually an average of, if, if the lots were, if they're, the lots were, you had two hundred lots at three million dollars tax value based on a hundred acres, that's just, that's just something to, to, to give you a scale. I mean, you could actually say, you could actually use eight thousand dollars an acre and see where everybody fell as well, but that was, you know, a hundred acres, two hundred lots, half, you know, half acre lots with a three million dollar tax value is where that, that number, that number came from. If you had that same...
So if you took two hundred lots and you times it by eight hundred fifty-seven dollars, you get one hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars.
That's correct. Now, that would be a three million dollar tax value and a hundred acres, and that's splitting the lots where you'd have two hundred lots, yes, sir, that's correct.
That's a lot of money, man. It just seems a little expensive to me, that's all, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Chuck, is, is exhibit five nine, is that an accurate picture? We keep talking about the million dollars and where would we find that in our budget? Is that an accurate picture of what we expect to collect? Because like, I see Presley, lots subject to parking recreation fees, seven hundred sixty at two hundred and five dollars a lot, that's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It's my understanding that the, the land that Presley's on is possibly up for sale again, there's no intent to build there, so why are we counting on, uh, that in revenues?
Well, I would say it would be subject to revenues at this particular time, until it's not on the market, it's not on the market, but, but this, all this information, I'm going to be as honest as I can, this information has, we have worked on this information for, for several months, and there keeps, you know, there, there's additional questions and there's, there's additional studies, and only really a couple of us that were involved with it back when it first, you know, when it first, when it first came to light, so, can, can those things, there, there are numbers that could be tweaked, can we look at those and come up with, you know, with, with an exact, with an exact figure? Yes, sir, but, I mean, we, I mean, I'm sorry, we cannot come up with an exact figure, but we can, we can tweak those. Now, there are others that could possibly be, are rumored to be coming online, you know, as well, that, that are, that are not on, that are not on there, for, for the other side of the argument.
Okay, then, the parking rec fee was put into place to help fund on, on new homes, and that would help fund or pay for additional needs in recreation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Basically, boil it down to the simplest thing?
Correct, provided in state law, state statutes allow that, yes, sir.
So, if I am a seventy-six-year-old couple, don't get out much, and I buy a new home in Gastonia, the new home I bought has been assessed a parking rec fee because I'm in a new area and a new home, but yet if I'm a young couple with six kids, most likely to use the parks and the Greenway, and I buy an existing home, do I pay a fee?
Uh, not that I know of.
Okay. What do those that rent apartments pay? What kind of fee do they pay?
Those, as far as rental, rental goes, it'd be the same with none.
Same rules, new, new construction, the way that was passed, new construction pays.
That's correct.
Existing does not.
So, that's my whole issue with this, is we're saying, we're going to expand parks, we're going to make parks better, because when you build a new house, you're impacting the parks. But anybody that buys a house is impacting a park potentially if they're going to use that. So why do we keep saddling a new home builder with all these fees when it's not just, we don't even know who's going to buy that home? They may never set foot in a park. I think we need to come up with a more equitable formula that charges all residents the same equally, it's like the school system. Your child may not go to school, you may not have children. I don't have children, but I still, still pay taxes for the schools. It's an equitable formula across the board that supports our school system. I don't understand why we don't have an equitable system across the board that can support our parks. It should not be burdened on one industry.
Yes, sir.
What, what's interesting about this, though, is that these fees, as, as they're generated, are going back to the same portions of town in which new parks and recreation facilities will become necessary. So, you're creating the demand, you're actually creating amenities that help sell the same properties that these developers want to sell. So these amenities are made available by the same people that are helping to pay for them in some small way. Now, let me give you a couple examples of what you're talking about, okay? Presley, as it stands right now, you're looking at a two hundred and five dollar per unit fee, okay? If you amortize that over three hundred and sixty months, which is a typical thirty-year loan, all right, it's fifty-seven cents a month, okay? If you suggest that you have a cap of three hundred dollars per unit, okay, you're talking about eighty-three cents per month, okay? If you take your most expensive properties on here, which are Kenmere at eleven hundred and forty-three dollars, they would pay three dollars and eighteen cents per month, and the villas at Robinson Oaks, the most expensive properties, at twenty-two hundred and forty-five dollars per unit, would pay six dollars and twenty-three cents per month. Now, nobody's telling them that they have to live there, nobody's telling them that they have to spend that amount of money, but obviously, their homes are going to be more valued because of the cost of the real estate than those, of those other properties that I just mentioned, so. And the last thing I want to say is, if Mr. Bomadere would tell us, if the average residential property in Gastonia, it, if it ever pays for itself in terms of the property taxes that it generates. So my question for you is, is when we have these subdivisions come online, okay, do we, in terms of the taxes that are paid over time, cover all the expenses that are incurred by the children that go to school, by the water and sewer lines that are run to those subdivisions, not within those subdivisions? Does residential truly pay for itself versus industrial, commercial?
Councilman, there's a, a lot of studies even nationwide on that, but most would suggest, at, at least in this area of the country, that in the single-family residential, you have to get at least to the two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house before it recoups what services a municipality would provide for it. The, the value in, in adwarem taxes is really in the commercial as far as paying for itself. For residential, probably two twenty-five to two fifty, other studies out there that may dispute that, but that's an opinion.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to what Councilman Pierceall was just talking about, an equitable formula, okay? And I think that's, that's kind of where I am right now, is, is that, you know, we need to, to have some kind of a reserve for, for parks and recreation down the road, for purchasing of land, or, or, you know, things like that, because like what Dr. Curran was just saying, is that, that different parts of the city are going to develop and grow that don't have parks in it, okay? So, I can, I can understand that. Is there another way that we can be equitable to the new homeowners, okay? Because right now, only new homeowners are paying this. If I were to sell my house, okay, tomorrow, then a couple moves in that have two or three children, okay, like we had when we were, when we were raising our children, then they're going to have the benefits of all of the parks and the recreation in the city, but they haven't paid anything into it either, okay? If I understand some of that concept, okay? Kind of like the school tax, okay? We all pay school tax because it's the community infrastructure. Well, parks and recreation is part of the community infrastructure. So if I sold our house and somebody had to pay a recreation fee, okay, of whatever that amount is, okay, then you get new development and you get used development that are all paying the same thing. Now, that might just be completely off of the wall, but if that is something that legally can be discussed with staff and looked at, I would like to see some numbers on something like that, okay? Because then, I don't know, I don't know how we would administer it, but, but if that would be an equitable way, everybody would be paying their fair share of the parks and recreation, and then that gives us an opportunity to build up that reserve as we need that reserve, because if we repeal it, we still got to find the money somewhere, sometime, to, to fund our additional parks and recreation facilities as a quality of life. So, you know, I don't know if we want to table this and let the staff look at it from a different perspective, but just food for thought.
Dr. Curran, you, you were giving some numbers that were based on amortization over a thirty-year loan, correct?
Correct, I did not add interest to that.
But, so what are you suggesting, that, that the home builders could have thirty years to pay it off? I mean, they're not getting thirty years to pay it off, they're being told, you pay now or you don't build. They don't get thirty years to pay it off. That's a lot of money.
Well, I think most people, most people, when they buy a house, take out a mortgage.
Correct.
So if that becomes a portion of the fee, because I don't believe that the fee is paid by the homeowner directly to city, is it not paid by the developer to the city at the time the permit is pulled?
The builder is being told to pay that upfront.
The builder pays that when the permit is pulled?
Of course, the builder passes it on to the buyer.
Right.
But that's a lot of money for the builder to come up with upfront. We hit him with the water and sewer, the parks and rec, I mean, everything.
He's only paying on a per-lot basis as a permit is pulled, he's not paying for all the lots at the same time.
Correct, but you don't know when he'll sell that house, he's just starting to build it.
Well, some are custom and some are spec, you know?
But you don't know when it's going to be sold, you, you, you can't say that it just happens and they get thirty years to pay it off. Using the thirty-year amortization plan, that's clouding the picture, that has nothing to do with what the builder is having to pay at the time.
Well, you know...
That's what the eventual consumer pays because of their mortgage. They don't even know they've paid a parks and rec fee, they have no clue they've paid one.
It's something, I know, you know, some of the other jurisdictions like Belmont, Mount Holly, I don't know how transparent that is in their whole process, whether or not that's made known to the lot buyer or the home buyer.
I think it would be even more equitable not to charge the home builder, but at the closing, make the attorney collect a fee that is then given to the city directly from the home buyer, so it's not pushed off on the home builder, that, that home buyer knows exactly what that money's for, it's because the city imposed that fee for their parks and rec. That's where it stands.
I would entertain looking into that.
And, and that's my problem, is we are forcing home builders to go up on their prices to build a home in Gaston County, and I, I don't disagree that we need to support the water, the sewer, the parks, the rec, but the consumer that ends up paying for it and the higher price of the house has no clue what they've paid for. All they see is, when Gastonia house costs this much, but I can go over to Lowell and I'm just using Lowell, I don't know, I can go over it for the same house, then it costs a couple thousand less, where are they going to go? And, and the builders do the same thing, they're like, I can build over here for cheaper. But if the consumer knew why they were paying more, I guarantee you, a lot of families, where they bought a house, if they got, got to closing and they said, well, in, in the city of Gastonia, you have to pay this much tax, and you have to pay a three hundred dollar parks and rec fee, they'd be like, oh, well, Gastonia has nice parks, I, I don't mind that, it's a one-time fee, or they could amortize it into their loan, they wouldn't mind doing that, but they have no idea it's there, and we're punishing our builders, and we're hearing it time and time and time again. I mean, there was just a big article in the Charlotte Observer, guess who was listed as behind? Gaston County, we're behind, we're behind, we're behind, we, we can't keep doing this, we've got to change the way we're doing it. And that's my soapbox.
Todd, that's excellent. Really, it, it just encourages builders to come here. The other thing is, I like what Mayor Pro Temp Craig said about having a ceiling on it of three hundred and fifty dollars. What I did is I took three hundred and fifty bucks and I timed it all out per lots, and if you do that, you'll find that the figure comes out to eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. There's a difference between the million and the flat fee is two hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is reasonable. And I think that's something the builders could work with, and Todd, I like your idea about putting it in so the, the homeowner will pay for it when they close.
Your honor? Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I, I really think that I, I like a lot of the discussion here, it wasn't a very big soapbox, Todd, it was a good-sized soapbox. Bottom line being, though, I, I think that we, we also need to investigate what Councilwoman Craig was saying about, and Todd, I'm going to, I'm going to throw to you and, and also Mayor, aren't there more pre-owned homes sold than new construction, especially in this economy? And that's where I think that we need to move forward and look at this a little bit more, because I, I, I see that there is, call it a burdening, it, we are a little bit behind the eight ball, but I think that there's a whole nother game out there, and that's the pre-owned game. And I think that really I would move to table and, and to take a real good look, an in-depth look at this, and I also liked, from your experience, Todd, that it's black and white, it's a park and rec fee, and it's demonstrable, because we do have better parks and rec than some of the other smaller cities that, that maybe don't have that fee. Get what you pay for in life, I think everybody pretty much knows that, to some degree, it's always true. And that's where I think we should be, I think we, I think we're moving too quickly, and I think we should look at the pre-owned.
You, that was the motion?
Uh, yes, I will make that.
You, you put it, you said it.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I like a discussion.
Well, I, I agree that we should come back with a new plan, however, I can't support a motion to table this, because what we're saying is, this is broken. Take it back, come back with something new, but in the meantime, we're still going to be charging, so if it's broken, let's stop it, figure out a way to get it fixed, come up with a new plan, and then bring it back. But we, I think we should stop charging, we haven't raised that much money on it anyway, we're in the build, the, we're getting ready to start the hot building season.
Okay, Todd, I hear what you're saying.
But to repeal this, we would have to do an ordinance amendment with an advertised public hearing that goes to the planning commission and then the city council, so it would take two or three months to get to that point anyway. If you want some tweaks to the ordinance, the way that Councilwoman Craig has described, and you want staff to go draft that, you know, we're going to get to the finish line at the same time, we can't just suspend the fee, because it is part of the ordinance, and you have to go through the ordinance procedure to abolish it. And then, as, as far as the whole pre-owned argument, I just want to point out that we have enabling legislation from the legislature that says we can charge this fee for new development. We don't have any authority to charge it for pre-owned homes.
Well, hearing, hearing what our attorney said, I, you're getting to the finish line at the same time, as long as it gets looked at and changed, I'll support it, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Okay.
What about the capping the fee at three fifty? If we're going to get to the finish line at the same time?
I think that's what, his motion was to have staff just review the whole thing and bring something new back, whether it be a cap.
Correct.
Pre-owned home, or whatever.
I think that the cap and the time of the collection of the fee are the two big items that I heard sketched out, that I know that we have the legal authority to... that I know that we have the legal authority to address.
Well, I, I think also, Ash, and I put it in my, my motion, I think also the clarity of fee in that it could be something where the new homeowner understands that they are getting that fee, what it's for, and it's not falling on the burden of the builder, correct?
Right.
I, I think I was, I was pretty explicit in that, that we, I, I, Todd, this comes from your idea, well, still your idea. It was, you know, to have parks and rec fee at closing. Love it. The way it should be, in my opinion. And I would support that and that was contained in my motion.
Okay. There is a motion. There's a second. Yes, ma'am.
And I can, I will second that motion.
Yeah, I think you already did.
I believe it is. Any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Should we continue? All righty. Moving along here. Ms. Craig, Audit Bids Insurance Committee Meeting Report. Brunda?
No, I would, uh, Councilman Gallagher's doing that report.
Well, we'd rather have you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um. We, we had, um, several things going on within the health, right, Judy? The health insurance. Staff recommended that we, we have to take each one of these and we have to vote on each one of them. Uh, staff recommends renewing the health insurance with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, um, of North Carolina this year. We had an increase. Uh, the proposed annual increase was eleven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a motion? I mean, there is a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Questions? Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Blue Cross, go ahead.
Number two, the stop-loss coverage for health insurance. Staff recommended renewing the contract for the stop-loss coverage with Gerber S.A. Benefit Services. The committee voted on it. It was two zip. And this, the renewal reflects no change in premiums. I make this in the form of a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Raise your hands, please.
Uh, the HSA, the Health Savings Account. Uh, staff recommends contributing five hundred and fifty dollars into the Health Savings Account of, of each eligible employee and retiree who participates in the city's health insurance program in July two thousand and fourteen. Employees not eligible for federally designated HSA would get the same dollar amount. Uh, an additional two hundred dollars can be added if the employee meets, meets the standards of the City Wellness Incentive Program. Uh, I make this in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Uh, stipend. We want to change that word from stipend to in payment in lieu of, uh, health insurance coverage for employees. Staff recommends the eligible employees and retirees that waived the health insurance program offered by the city receive a payment in lieu of a thousand dollars in fiscal year fifteen. Uh, staff recommends the payment be broken into two payments. One, five hundred dollars paid in July two thousand and fourteen, and the second payment going out January two thousand and fifteen. I make this in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? All in favor? All right, sir.
Delta Dental. Staff recommends renewing the self-funded dental plan and continue utilizing Delta Dental of North Carolina as plan administrator. We recommend keeping both the city and employees funded at the same level as we currently have. Uh, the current rate is two dollars and eighty-seven cents per policy. There's a four point one eight percent increase. It goes from two point eight cents per policy per month, and the proposed rate is gonna be two point ninety-nine. I make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Discussion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Judy, you may have an answer to this. If not, you can get back to me after we vote. Are we able to go further out than two years and have any type? Would that be financially more attractive to us to do so? What is your position on that? Or, and if you don't, I'm just wondering about that, if we can't go out further? Because I, I've been involved with this plan for many, many years.
Yes, sir. We can extend the contract for a period of time. We did not get proposals that way. Um, we could go back and ask them for the sake of going over benefits. It would probably be beneficial to do it two years this time and then look at a longer contract the next time.
I, I would like to have information on that. I think the rest of the council would as well because sometimes the longer periods with a stable corporation can save you some money, like real dollars.
Certainly. We'll be happy to look at that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, sir. Raise your hands.
Do you want to? Yeah. We're getting new information.
We're going, we're going to approve because we have all the stuff that's right here now. But she's going to, as we move forward, she's going to collect that information because the proposals, correct, if I'm wrong, Judy, the proposals were only for two years, correct? That's, that's all we could really vote on, lawfully.
Okay. I make it in the form of a motion that we, um, staff recommended the increase and go from there. For Delta Dental. Is that, for two years?
All, all in favor? Okay.
Number six, Employee Healthcare/Health Fair. Uh, the, uh, staff recommends awarding the contract of the employee healthcare clinic, including services needed at the health fair to Carolina's healthcare system. Uh, the current cost is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, sir.
EEP, Employee Assistance Program. Uh, staff recommends renewing the contract for Employee Assistance Program with McLaughlin Young. The current premium is based on utilization. Uh, they anticipate the cost being sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, sir.
Life insurance. Staff recommends renewing the contract for life insurance with Assurant Life Benefit through Employee Benefit Advisors. It creates approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Number nine is supplemental insurance. Uh, staff recommends renewing the contract for supplemental insurance with Pierce Group Benefits. I make that in the form of a motion. There's no change in premiums.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
All right, number ten. This has to do with the city's vendor use of, um, the facilities. They have changed the verbiage in here to, for, um, let me see.
Special events?
Yeah, special events. It came to staff's attention that the current policy on insurance requirements for vendors does not address the issues of nonprofit organizations that utilize city facilities. Currently, there have been verbal understandings that nonprofit organizations or individuals who utilize the city are not required to provide proof of insurance unless they are expecting a thousand or more participants or the event will involve serving overhaul. Uh, the revision to the written policy will reflect how the city has actually been handling the insurance requirements for nonprofit organizations and individuals. It's actually gonna be in writing instead of by verbal. I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? That's about it, huh?
That is, oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. We had asked the, um, staff to come up with a, a number of, uh, what the bottom line, insurance cost, the city. And, uh, Judy, do you have that number?
I think it came out to like seven thousand dollars.
Right. It was.
Per person.
We're thinking it was about seven point eight million, slightly less than eight million.
Yeah, but we were prob, trying to break it down per person.
Right.
I think it came out to like seven thousand, maybe three hundred or so.
It has to be around that because we actually, um, had to calculate. Took some of the numbers back out, but in the end, it was pretty close to that. And we can certainly update that.
I, I don't have the paper with me. I have it at home.
Well, I mean, and that was something that we had talked about in the, um, budget session about the, the salary and the benefits, okay? When you take the salary and the benefits, then this, we felt like that this was a very strong benefit insurance package. This doesn't include 401K and some of the other things. But just the insurance part came up to about seven thousand dollars per employee, if I remember correctly.
That is correct, yeah.
Uh, and, and we just felt like that was a very strong, uh, package because they won't find that in the private sector. So, uh, I, you know, this is, this was a lot of discussion about, about the insurance that, that we provide for our employees. Just kind of information.
And I did have that number, seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six.
Seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six. Per person. Per employee.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
That was all we was. Oh, that is it. Now, I'm finished. Yeah, we did. Did we approve that?
That's what I'm asking, did?
Yeah.
Jenny, did we approve the last?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Item seven, um, you're through with your.
Yes.
Item seven is the cit, citizen committee appointments needed for two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. And says the presentation by the mayor and the council members. Please, uh, go over to Exhibit seven one. I can tell you, well, first of all, if you go take these individually and by and far, the, the large majority are wanting to serve again. And we could certainly act on that, um, to begin with, or, or as we get to it, however you want to take it. But this has been coming up. It's time to dance. So, let's, let's, uh. Yes, sir.
I'd like to entertain, um, to put two people on the ABC board. I'd like it to be Michael Dean, who spoke earlier today, and also Melvin Burris as nominating people.
Mr. Burris is, is on it, and, uh, this should be a.
Re, reappointment?
Re-up. And Steve would take the place position currently held by Mr. Novans.
Yes, sir.
Michael Bur, uh, Michael Dean's in, in.
Melvin.
Melvin Bur.
Bur.
Burris.
Is, is that a three-year term?
Says so.
Yes, sir.
A three-year, okay.
Is Tom Novan no longer gonna be serving?
I second that motion. Excuse me.
Tom, yeah, he's gonna be stepping, he'll, he would be, he would be replaced by Michael Dean.
But is he stepping down or does he want to remain on it?
Somebody calls on me.
Bill, is it, there, you've got a second, right?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I second his motion.
I second.
Yeah, I, I second his motion.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kim?
Yes, uh, I did get something from Mr. Bet dated yesterday and reviewed it today that, uh, Mr. Novans will not be seeking reappointment. I would also tell the, uh, the body that I have several persons are interested in, uh, that position. I did not know it was going to be coming available. Candidly, I did not request those folks to come this evening nor to distribute, um, any, uh, resumes or anything like that. So, uh, in, in that vein, I'd like to, to put this off until our next meeting to see if we could, uh, we could entertain those other folks.
We, haven't we, uh, put it off last meeting?
Councilman Gallagher, if you look at the data, Larry Beck's memo to me about Mr. Novans, it was dated yesterday.
Right, I understand.
At that point, he was still serving.
Uh, what I'm saying is, we already put it off two weeks, uh, these appointments.
They don't expire until June thirtieth, sir.
And I would like to have a vote on this. I call the question.
Well, I have a, I have one also. Can, can we nominate him and vote on him?
Says what?
Can we have nominations and then vote on each, each individual?
You mean individually? Well, that's what, he, he has.
He's making an appointment to do too, but, uh, I know that Chuck Leifert is interested in serving. He's former assistant chief for the city police. He's now an attorney in town, and he's expressed an interest in serving too.
Okay, there, there is a, there is a, let's see if I'm, I'm correct on this. There is a motion on the floor and a second to, uh, appoint, uh, Michael Dean and Melvin Burris for these two positions, of which, of course, Melvin is a reappointment to his same seat for another three years. And this is three, I'm going strictly by what it says. The terms expire, um, six-thirty, and, but these are three-year terms. And this is the motion that we're voting on and you called now the question, right? Okay. So we're gonna vote on these two together.
We're gonna vote to call the question?
Yeah, we can do that. Is there a motion to call the question? I mean, is there a second? Is it?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion?
There's no discussion on, on this, there's no discussion on the, on the motion to call the question, so now you vote.
That's the best news I've heard.
So now, so now, so now you vote on calling the question.
Let's vote on calling the question.
Point, point of, point of. Except for a point of order.
And that would be, is there discussion allowed after this vote before the vote is taken?
There's not. That is the point of calling the question. There's gonna be no discussion on the next motion, which is the two people who are nominated by Mr. Gallagher.
All right.
All in favor of calling the question? One, two, three. All opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, we're back open again, ma'am. Discussion?
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I, I really think that when there's several people that may be interested in these positions, that it's only fair to the council that they are being, they're made fully aware of who these individuals are, their backgrounds, you know, their interests, whatever. And that's good government. You know, why we would, you know, railroad through a decision as qualified as these individuals may be who've been nominated, I, I don't, you know, but I don't know who else is interested. So that, you know, leaves a void in my mind as to who else to consider. And out of deference to our council persons who have other people that they have some interest in, you know, why wouldn't we postpone this for a couple of weeks and get the, you know, appropriate documentation and allow these other people at least to speak, you know? Some people already have their minds made up, I understand. But, you know, maybe not all of us do, and that, you know, it's respectful and I think it's appropriate and it's good procedure. And I would hope that everyone would consider that for any of these nominations because they're important.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
I have to support, uh, Councilman Curren's comments and just say, I don't see any harm in postponing these a little bit, but I think we do need to set a definite date and say, at this council meeting, on this date, bar none, we're voting. If your person's not in by this time, I mean, we're, we're being televised right now. If we're getting out to the masses, the last meeting, we weren't televised. So we're televised now. It's getting out to the masses. If you're interested in the position, contact one of the council members. And on this date, we're voting. It's done. That way, we give everybody a chance, like, like Councilman Curren said. I do think it's important that we get their information in front of us. I, I don't feel comfortable voting for or against somebody that I don't even know who they are. So if we could set a date, I'm good with that.
Well, let me just respond to that. If I may, I was saying, May the sixth, we had this in our agenda. And we pretty much talked about it then that we needed to go ahead and, and staff, of course, would like to have it too. Mr. Burris is a reappointment. We know who. Mr. Burris is a reappointment, we know who he is, he's a fireman, he's a great guy. I'm sure does a good job, and I'm sure would like to serve again. I haven't talked to him about it, by the way, but he's, he's, he's been there, and also, Michael Dean, there's, you got the resume there, but, but he served so many years on there, as others have done, and Tom Novak's just been, he's been serving forever, and he's great, man. I would like to get some of these voted in, instead of coming back with the, who's playing fa, I don't agree with Dr. Curlin on that, this good old boy type thing, playing favorites, I mean, I'd like to get the job done.
Mr. Mayor.
Will you interrupt?
Well, I'm sorry.
But go ahead.
I apologize, no, go ahead.
I'm getting ticked, go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't intend to mean to interrupt you.
Oh, I, go ahead.
I'd like, at least Chuck Lieford and several others expressed an interest.
Why didn't you tell us that May sixth?
Well.
Why didn't you tell us that tonight?
Let me tell you why I didn't, because I talked to the representative of ABC, and we already told him that Chuck Lieford was interested, and he usually makes, presents who's interested, and I would have brought that, I did bring it up when I finally realized it. Chuck Lieford is the former assistant chief.
Oh, I know him extremely well.
Very qualified, Mr. Dean's been on there twenty years, that's long enough. We don't need to put people back on this minute, forever and ever and ever and ever. We need to give new blood, new people, and you said something about new blood one day on the electricity court, give new people a chance to serve, and this guy, and Chuck Lieford, for instance, when Larry Beck came to work, Chuck Lieford, who's a regular police officer, was the ABC representative there, he probably wouldn't be a better qualified person than Chuck Lieford to serve, and I'd like to have, to have an opportunity to have a resume for him, and let you have an opportunity to consider him. I'm just not gonna vote for somebody, I, I think we ought to restrict it to two or three-year terms, two, three-year terms, or three, three-year terms, and that's it, is that you can't come back, but I just, I just, it's just.
Well, I started in seventy-one, when did you start?
Start what?
Politics, sit, hold an office, how many offices did you have?
Nineteen seventy-eight, but the people.
But that's a long, that's more than twenty years, it's a long time for it.
But the people, but the people, but the people elected me, and this is a small group.
And they elected us to, to pick these people, all of them?
Yeah, but I appreciate if we could wait on at least that one, and let these other, and we go ahead with the rest on if you want to.
I have a question.
Yes?
Mr. Dean has served on the ABC board for twenty years, according to his resume. He's been off a year, so he's not, it's not concurrent with him, but he's familiar with it, one, and two, he brings a wealth of knowledge. There are cer- certain people on that board who've called me and told me that they like to have him on there, because when they go to do something, he gives them perspective about the history of what has transpired within the plan that they wanted put forth and go through with, similar to what Ed Munn does with us a lot of times. I've only been on the council for two years, but I, I enjoy his advice when he starts telling me the history of certain things, and how things can work out, and how things fit in, and I think he'd be a fine candidate to put on there in place of Tom Novak. Melvin Burris has been on there, and he's, he's a fireman that's in town, and he's done a fine job, from what I could tell, from, you know, speaking to some of the people within the board itself, and I'm just saying that, you know, by speaking to the board members, those are the two people that they had mentioned to me, and that's why I'm bringing them forth, and the appointment is from the city council, it's not from just the ABC representative, from what I understand.
Uh, Mr. Kim?
Again, let me reiterate that you're, I believe that you're presumptuous in some of what you're saying, again, let me go back to the date of this. You apparently did not understand that Mr. Novans, according to this officially, I did not get notified that he was not considering reappointment until yesterday. This is dated, no, this is dated Monday, the nineteenth.
Well, should you have looked into that, like, I mean, for the past two weeks, I mean, May sixth is when we had, you know, tabled this.
I was number one, I was out of town. Number two, I requested.
Right, but you've been in town.
Don't interrupt me. Number two, I requested from Mr. Beck that he contact Mr. Novans to get an answer to that. He has served many years, and I am not going to just preclude, well, he's not gonna serve, he is gonna serve, he may have needed some time to decide, I don't know, but I know that I made the request, and this is when I got it, it was yesterday.
Well, is there, does that report not say that he doesn't want to serve?
The, the report, I will read it, it's are into the record. Tom Novans, whose term on the Gastonia ABC board will, will expire June thirtieth, twenty-fourteen, has elected not to seek reappointment.
And, and the, about Ms. Gray?
I was not aware either, I mean, I second the motion, and I stand behind that, but I was not aware that some of these other people were, were interested, okay, and, and like the mayor says, we've been working on this since May the sixth, okay? So, it would have been nice if, if some of these people that, that were interested had been shared with some of the other council people, but, but they weren't, so I was not aware that there were some other people that were.
I'll get your resume the next time I was.
But, you know, that's, that's where I was coming from, is because of the people.
Mr. Smith, tell us where we are.
Um, you have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Mr. Dean and Mr. Burris.
There is a motion.
And it's for discussion.
A motion on the floor to, for the three-year term, as you see at the very top there, position, Mr. Burris in his present position to continue, and Mr. Novans, who doesn't wish to, to return, be replaced by Michael Dean. That's the motion, that's the second, that's the discussion, we're gonna vote, okay? All in favor of the, of the motion, just raise your hand, please. Four, okay.
I didn't have any other choice. Only thing they gave us.
Opposed. Three, it's four to three, and, okay, we have, we have two members, two new members at the beginning, July one, I guess, of the ABC. All right, community, now, the next one, they're all interested in serving another term on the Community Development Citizens Advisory Board, two-year term. Mr. Brown, Mr. Albert Moss, Reese Barnett, Scott Grig, Melissa Terry, and, and Tim Bolt,
I move that the group be appointed.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. We need a, does anyone, has anyone talked to anyone about the board, advisory boards at the farmers market, it's been vague? Okay, we'll, there's one we'll go after, okay? Firemen's Relief Fund trustees, that Mary and John have, have, and it's, it's, it's in here, Chief Welch is, that they would like to, interested in serving another term. Is there a motion they be approved?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, okay, all in favor? Okay, so we've got Community Development, and we've got Firemen's Relief Fund, and Historic District Commission.
I have some, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so that's a little different, and we, we, you know, I thought about the position currently held by, well, it says she's, Ms. Williams is interested in serving another term, and her attendance is good. Sumner and Howren do not wish to serve.
That's correct, so.
All right.
All right, Ms. Williams, John Howren stepping down, he's now the chairman.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams is the vice chairman.
Okay.
So I'd like to move that we reappoint Ms. Williams, and, and effective July one, she'll also be the chairman.
All right.
And can I throw in there that.
I was gonna say, you want to.
Yeah, and Wade White is, is on there now, I'll make him the vice chairman.
He's, he's already on there?
Yes.
Do we appoint the chair?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
I second.
So, so Wade could take the, well, no, so.
Ms. Williams will be the chairman, effective July first, and then Wade will be the vice chairman.
Are we voting Wade back in, or is she just?
No, no, he's already on there.
In other words, it's, he is a different time, okay?
Yeah, he just, he just will be vice chairman.
Is there anybody taking Howard's place, is what the mayor?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to do that.
Okay, Wade White.
You want a second?
Okay, we can put this all in one, go ahead.
Sir?
Go ahead, oh, you got anybody else?
Do you need, do you need a, did you make a motion for those, the vice chair and, I mean, chair and vice chair, Mrs. Williams and?
Yes, I did, including that in my motion with Ms. Williams, that she'd be the chair, effective July one, Wade White would be the vice.
And I second that.
Okay.
And the way I look at that is, we, we just voted on one person there.
Right.
Wade's already there, except we didn't give the title to him. Okay, well, the motion is, let's vote on those two, or on that, if we can, any other discussion, all in favor? Okay, that's still two more.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have, I put this at your desk, thanks to Mr. Will Blackwelder, retired.
Yeah.
He's lived in Yorkchester thirteen years, he lives right near where Ernest Sumner lived, Farce Hill. He is currently the membership chair of the Yorkchester Association, Member, Community Association, he was Community Watch Chair, and he's had his home on the tour of homes twice, and I move that we appoint him, I put these on each person's.
Second.
Sure, everybody should have gotten one.
He's, he's, he's ready to go, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah, he's given me this.
Okay.
Second on, on Mr. Mike.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have somebody else that's interested, I'll bring your resume if you want till next time.
Yes, sir.
Let me do the other one.
Sure, what you got, sniff them out there, that, no, that, I know you had two in place.
Yes, yes, sir, I have a name, but I get a resume for the other.
Okay, all right, Planning Commission, Ward Cole.
You can skip mine, I, I do have somebody, and I'll bring the resumes in.
All right.
Believe it or not, I do have a resume, guys. We're good.
Okay.
I do not plan to make mine tonight.
It says that Mr. Kellin, Mr. Bradshaw, and Mr. Long are interested in serving another term, and their attendance is good.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Kellin, it's Ward five, till next time.
Okay.
I wanna talk to him.
All right, is there a motion to approve Jack Bradshaw and Alec Long?
Notion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Okay, so we did approve them, you're gonna get back next time. Okay, Recreation Advisory Board, Dr. Meakin and, and Mr. Haddaway are interested in serving another term, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? All right, Residential Rental Property Review Board, two-year term, Mr. Keller, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Giacobi, and Ms. McFarland are interested in serving another term, and their attendance is good. Okay, yeah, yes, sir.
With regard to the city council appointment currently held by Rodney Parham, who does not want to serve another term.
Uh-huh.
I would go ahead and nominate Mr. Mark McNeil, who was before you this evening, I distributed his resumes, and unfortunately, he was a little nervous and did not under, you know, did not enunciate who exactly, what particular board he was interested in.
I second that.
Could, since we only have one to replace, could your motion include Mr. McNeil as the council nominee, and also the others to be reappointed?
That's fine.
Mark, yeah, that's good.
Mark McNeil, that way we can knock that whole thing out, if nobody has objections.
I would amend to reflect all the other nominees.
I would second that.
Uh, any other discussion, to your turn, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You, you would reappoint Mr. Keller, and then Mr. Munn would reappoint Ms. McFarland. A, a letter to that effect, you know, from each respective office, Mr. Munn could, can do, which to Mr.?
All right.
No, never had a problem.
The Tourism Development Authority, three-year term, currently held by J.D. Deba, and Deb Deba, and Lodging Industry Representative, two-year term, currently held by Miss Daisy.
So moved.
Make a motion, just put them in, keep them?
Second, here.
All right, all in favor? Okay, Zoning Board of Adjustment, three-year terms, Mr. Dixon, Ms. Vega, and Bob Biggerstaff are interested in serving another term, their attendance is good, is there a motion? Just move, is there a second? Yes?
I have somebody that's interested in serving, I didn't know we were gonna do all those, but I don't have his resume, can we hold on the V A, Martina?
Martina.
V A C C A? Anyway, I know you're in Harvard, but.
I'm really not, I just moved on.
It lists our address over here as Lowell, and, what?
Well, let's just see.
Board of Adjustment says one oh one, West First Street, Lowell, North Carolina.
Yeah, it could be just the man.
Yeah, but I, I think they ought to have a home address, so we'll know where they, where they live, so could we hold on that, if we can confirm that?
I think we should, in that case.
Can we do the other two?
Yeah.
Michael Dixon.
Michael and Bob.
Bob Biggerstaff. I make a motion for those two?
Second that.
All right.
That's on Dixon and Biggerstaff, so.
Dixon and Biggerstaff, okay. Discussion, all in favor? Okay. What was that? Where, where is that? Am I missing that, geez?
I saw it.
What are you looking for?
Where you saw the lady, V A C A.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple pages over, where it lists everybody.
Right here.
Board of Adjustments.
Right here. Seven five.
Seven five.
Excellent point, guys, that's the address, it's first, okay, I don't know that.
That's where she, that's where she works.
Probably.
Oh, it's where she worked?
But you ought to have your home address.
Well. Okay, that's still two more.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have, I put this at your desk, thanks to Mr. Will Blackwelder, retired.
Yeah.
He's lived in Yorkchester thirteen years, he lives right near where Ernest Sumner lived, Farce Hill. He is currently the membership chair of the Yorkchester Association, Member, Community Association, he was Community Watch Chair, and he's had his home on the tour of homes twice, and I move that we appoint him, I put these on each person's.
Second.
Sure, everybody should have gotten one.
He's, he's, he's ready to go, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah, he's given me this.
Okay.
Second on, on Mr. Mike.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have somebody else that's interested, I'll bring your resume if you want till next time.
Yes, sir.
Let me do the other one.
Sure, what you got, sniff them out there, that, no, that, I know you had two in place.
Yes, yes, sir, I have a name, but I get a resume for the other.
Okay, all right, Planning Commission, Ward Cole.
You can skip mine, I, I do have somebody, and I'll bring the resumes in.
All right.
Believe it or not, I do have a resume, guys. We're good.
Okay.
I do not plan to make mine tonight.
It says that Mr. Kellin, Mr. Bradshaw, and Mr. Long are interested in serving another term, and their attendance is good.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Kellin, it's Ward five, till next time.
Okay.
I wanna talk to him.
All right, is there a motion to approve Jack Bradshaw and Alec Long?
Notion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Okay, so we did approve them, you're gonna get back next time. Okay, Recreation Advisory Board, Dr. Meakin and, and Mr. Haddaway are interested in serving another term, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? All right, Residential Rental Property Review Board, two-year term, Mr. Keller, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Giacobi, and Ms. McFarland are interested in serving another term, and their attendance is good. I, okay, yeah, yes, sir.
With regard to the city council appointment currently held by Rodney Parham, who does not want to serve another term.
Uh-huh.
I would go ahead and nominate Mr. Mark McNeil, who was before you this evening, I distributed his resumes, and unfortunately, he was a little nervous and did not under, you know, did not enunciate who exactly, what particular board he was interested in.
I second that.
Could, since we only have one to replace, could your motion include Mr. McNeil as the council nominee, and also the others to be reappointed?
That's fine. That's fine.
David Moore.
Mark. Yeah, okay, that's good.
Martin McNeil. That way we can knock that whole thing out, if nobody has objections.
I would amend to reflect all the other nominees.
I would second that.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion, to your turn, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You, you would reappoint Mr. Keller, and then Mr. Munn would reappoint Ms. McFarland. A, a letter to that effect, you know, from each respective office, Mr. Munn could, can do, first to Mr.?
All right.
No, never had a phone line.
The Tourism Development Authority, three-year term, currently held by J.D. Dibb and, Deb Dibb, and Lodging Industry Representative, two-year term, currently held by Mr. Bond, Daisy.
So moved.
Make a motion, just put them in and keep them?
Second, your.
All right, all right, all in favor? Okay, Zoning Board of Adjustment, three-year terms, uh, Mr. Dixon, Ms. Vega, and, and Bob Biggerstaff are interested in serving another term, their attendance is good. Is there a motion to?
I have somebody that's interested in serving, I didn't know we were going to do all those, but I don't have his resume. Can we hold on, uh, V A, uh, it, it, Martina?
Martine.
V A C C A? Uh, anyway, I know you're in Harvard, but.
I'm really not, I just moved on.
It, it lists our address over here as Lowell, and, uh.
Well, let's just.
Board of Adjustments says, one-on-one, West First Street, Lowell, North Carolina.
Yeah, it could be just a man during the year.
Yeah, but I, I think they ought to have a home address, so they won't know where they, where they live. So could we hold on that, if we can confirm that?
I think we should, in that case.
Can we do the other two?
Yeah.
Uh, Michael Dixon.
Michael and Bob.
Bob Biggerstaff. I make a motion for those two?
Second that.
All right.
That's on Dixon and Biggerstaff, correct?
Dixon and Biggerstaff, okay. Um, discussion, all in favor? Okay. What was that? Where, where is that? Am I missing that sheet?
I saw it.
What are you looking for?
Where you saw the lady, V A C A.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple pages over, what, just everybody.
Right here.
Board of Adjustments.
Right here. Seven five.
Seven five.
Excellent point, you guys. That's the address, it's first, okay. I don't know that.
That's where she, that's where she works.
Probably.
Oh, it's where she worked?
But you ought to have your home address.
Yeah.
Well. Don't say that, because Michael doesn't, so.
We know where he lives.
Yeah, okay.
Well, not everybody does. Not everybody.
Um, all right, we're down to, okay, we know what we're going to come back and do next, next meeting on those. Uh, the, uh, City Attorney's Report.
No report, Mr.?
Uh, City Manager's Report.
The only thing I'd like to add is the Grizzlies' home opener is Saturday, May twenty-fourth, six o'clock.
This, this Saturday?
Yeah, this Saturday. Thank you.
All right, City Council Report, Ms. Craig.
Uh, the only report I have is, is that I did attend the Caremont Community Challenge fourteen on Saturday out at Forest View, and I'm sure Dr. Curlin probably has some more information on that because his Rotary Club helped sponsor that and what that money was going to be used for, and that's my report.
Number four.
I've been out of town for a week, so I don't have much to report, but when I get it all caught up together, I'll give you a report.
Yeah, two things. One, I just want to publicly thank the three thousand five hundred thirteen people that had voted, conservatives that voted for me for County Commission, even though I missed it by two hundred and twenty-four votes, I just want to tell everyone out there, thank you very much, and it was a good showing. The other item is our website. I know they were saying that they're revamping this. Do you know when that's going to happen?
I'll, I'll get a report as to the status of it for the council.
All right, that's, and that's it.
That's true.
The Caremont Community Health Challenge was on Saturday, and it was a combination of a, a five-k walk or run, as well as two different bicycle routes, thirty-nine miles and fifty miles, extremely well attended for the first year. It's going to be an annual thing. It was co-sponsored with Caremont, as well as the Gastonia East Rotary, and the purpose for this was to raise funds for Gaston County Schools Robotics Program. So the idea was to raise fifteen thousand dollars towards the robotics program, which they did through the sponsorships they raised and also. But it was well attended, excellent weather, everybody seemed to have joined themselves. There was just a lot going on that day, and another, you know, hopefully this will be something similar to the Run for the Money, but more of a, a health-driven focus as compared to a nonprofit fundraising focus. So good things in the community, wonderful reasons to get out and get, get active and get healthy.
Kim.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several items. First one, I attended a, a executive summit for the American Board of Certification and Homeland Security. One of the things that the association is really embracing is to be able to get our veterans and those that served us overseas back to work with some job skills. To that end, I was given a copy of a new school guide publication. It's the Veterans Education Guide, and this has, it's actually filled with opportunities at colleges and levels of higher education for our veterans. And in the back, all they have to do is tear the card out and mail it away. I've requested that our city buy ten of these and have them at City Hall. Additionally, I'm going to give a couple to, uh, former Commissioner Loftus, who's in, works in the Veterans Affairs now, because I think this is an excellent opportunity in this vehicle of a lot of colleges, one unit, and just tear out the cards and mail them away. Secondly, my wife and I were very, uh, pleased to attend the NASCAR Sprint Cup All-Star Race. Uh, as you all know, that both NASCAR and the Charlotte Motor Speedway very much really embrace the rich heritage of those that serve us and our veterans. And this year's new pen is the salute to the troops, and I was able to get you one, Mayor. Here's one for your lapel.
Thank you.
And I'd like to present that to you.
Thank you.
On behalf of Navarre and Charlotte Motor Speedway. That's it. That's all I have, sir.
Well, it's, it's, it's ironic, because I, I was there today with the runners down at the garden, and gave them all a Gastonia hat, and I was bald with a beard, he was my favorite. But they're here, they're here tonight till in the morning, but it was, uh, they, they came from Athens, they ran, they, I don't know where, they've been running, they're going from Atlanta to Washington, I think, but, uh, anyway, there'll be more in there.
Mr. Mayor, can?
Yes, sir.
I made you something, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
And my battery went out on this thing.
Yeah.
And indicated this, got a green light, but it won't work. The only board that we have that meets in the morning, which means a lot of people that work can't come to, is the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I wish this council would, uh, be thinking about it between then and next time, maybe put them at six at night, like the Planning Commission meets, like the Historic District Commission meets, like everybody else meets, like we meet. And when they meet in the morning, it means somebody that's going to come before them has to get off work or whatever or something. I'd like to see if we couldn't, if everybody would not make a decision tonight, but consider moving that till, uh, six o'clock at night, something like that. That's all I'm asking, you just consider that between then and next time.
Exactly. Okay, uh, the other thing was, and I'm not going to go, there were several, uh, greetings at several places that I want to, this is a letter to, to y'all, and to me. Thank you, thank you, this is from Chief Welch. Thank you all very much for allowing Captain Kelly and I to visit Gota. It was a wonderful experience. That's from Phil. Anything else? He just left. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, it's, uh, four hours, six to ten, our, our, but we got, we got it done, so thank you all very much. Move adjourned, going to.